Started and call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor, do you have me?
I'm here. Good morning.
Good morning. Supervisor Bonkowski?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett? Mayor Kroll? Mayor Proton Bagwell?
Here. Thank you. Quorum is present. May I have an invocation? Is Louie here? Oh, there he is. Thank you.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to pause and remember you. And thank you for your grace in our lives. We pray for protection and blessing on our sheriff's department, fire department. And we pray for wisdom for our supervisors as they make decisions and lead our beautiful city. We give you grace and thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Don Gibson, would you do us a favor and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move on the agenda to public comment. Anyone from the public that would like to come up? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Ronnie Gallis, Veronica Gallis for the record. And I'm here for two announcements. One, wearing my Carson City employee hat to let the public know that the Health Department now has flu vaccines. So every Thursday, we're open for walk-ins from 8:30 to 11:30 and 1:00 to 4:30. So come get your flu shot before flu hits our community and communities beyond us. And then wearing my hat as a community member. I want to let folks know that there are multiple churches in the community that are set up to do a warming shelter from November through March. St. Peter's Episcopal, St. Paul's Lutheran, St. Teresa's Catholic Church, First United Methodist, and then LDS is also involved, and Salvation Army and Fish. So there's a homeless shelter that houses folks that are provides a place to sleep for folks. So there's a volunteer training on October 5th at 2 o'clock at St. Teresa's. And we're looking for volunteers, especially men. We pair a man and a woman up with each shift. And we have an 8 to midnight, midnight to 4 for all the insomniacs in our community, and then 4 to 7 to get everybody all back to work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have any further public comment?
I'll just make one announcement, just so that the agenda flow, everyone understands. We have two members of the board that are not present today. They're out of town. So there will be three votes required for any motion to pass. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of the rules when, in this particular case. So we will need three three positive votes for the motion to carry. So we're going to move on to item six for approval of the minutes. Did you both have a chance? Any corrections?
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for August 15th, 2019, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of August the 15th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Repose, the motion carried. We're on to item seven, adoption of the agenda. City manager, do we have any convenience changes or any items to remove? Anyone need to know?
The only thing is pulling 9C from, just off the consent agenda.
For, for direct discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, any member of the public that needs an accommodation for time that would like an agenda item moved? Okay. Then we'll proceed as published, with the exception of pulling 9C. We're on 8A, proclamation to recognize the energy efficiency. And then we'll do the city employee certificates. So if we want to move down to agree. So is this Chaz? Yes. I have to. Someone? So, we have a proclamation for the Energy Efficiency Day, October 2nd, 2019. I'm not going to read the entire thing. It is in the packets, but I'll hit some of the highlights. So whereas "Energy efficiency is the art of getting the same or better performance using less energy, all while cutting utility bills for residential, business, industrial customers, and saving citizens money." And whereas "More than 2.3 million Americans work in the energy efficiency sector in local, good-paying, clean-energy jobs that can't be outsourced, and increasing efficiency will create more of them." And whereas "Together, the residents of Carson City, Nevada can continue to contribute to sustainability efforts by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in their daily lives." Now therefore, I, Robert Kroll, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 2nd, as Energy Efficiency Day in Carson City, and encourage citizens to join us in supporting our clean energy goals and moving toward more energy efficiency now and in the future.
And I bet Chaz can tell us something we can do on October 2nd to meet that goal.
Yeah, sure. First, let me say I'm accepting this on behalf of the Capital City Sustainability Partnership, which is a partnership between citizens in the community and the city, working towards energy efficiency in the city as well as sustainability in a variety of areas. And so that's ongoing. And, ride your bicycle more on October the 2nd. But, yeah, just also a reminder, we do need to have another meeting about sustainability partnership coming up soon. So, thanks. And I'd also mention that Asta Germer, who is an integral part of this sustainability partnership, was unable to be here today. She's out of town. So I'll accept it on her behalf, too.
Thank you so much. Let's get a quick picture. Oh, no. You have to have a picture, if you take a picture. Right?
This is worth a lot.
We'll Photoshop the mayor and John.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 8B. This is where we, as the board, present our length of service certificates for our employees that are just superstars. So we're going to start with our 25-year.
We usually start.
The other way?
The other way.
The bottom? Okay. All, no 5-year people?
No, they didn't show up.
Okay, we'll start with the 10-year people. So with us today, let's start with Cecilia, our wonderful risk manager. Does just a super job. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. And, oh, Cecilia! Remember, I don't let you keep them unless you get a picture with us. Okay? Oh, Ronnie, Veronica Gallis, if you want to come on up. Thank you for your 10 years of service. Thank you for all you do. Really appreciate it. Okay, and he's, are we moving on to 15 years? Yes. Okay. How about Ronald Reed? Our facility maintenance manager. 15 years. Just 20 to go? No? Well, what can I negotiate? No. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And Gina Lee, our Business Systems Analyst. I already know you're relieving us. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you. Okay, and Christine France? Judicial clerk? 15 years. We are getting a few more out of you, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay. That's the way. Thank you so much. All right, and Crystal Cooper? Another judicial clerk? 15. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your service. Thank you. And Nathan Brem? A sergeant? Are you a graveyard? Well, thank you for coming. Did we keep you up?
No, that was my night out.
Oh! We did it right. She kept you up. Thank you so much for your service and all that you do for us. Thank you. Okay, and then 25 years? How about Michael Cohen? A sergeant? How's that, how's the traffic unit go? Are you our new traffic unit? How's it going? It's great? Don't give me a ticket. No. I have a foot. So I might deserve it if you get me. Thank you so much. We'll get a picture.
Do we have any friends and family who would like to get in the picture? We would like to have you in the picture.
Come on up.
We're taking away a year. We're taking away one year.
Got a pen? This might not affect you.
She's not going to let you pee in here. More of the barrier. By the way, Patrick, while you're here. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Oh, yeah. Congratulations. Yeah, I know it's.
Okay, we're going to come back to order up here. And we're going to consider now the consent agenda, with the exception of item 9C that we polled earlier. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 9A and 9B.
How about 10? How about the rest?
And 10, and 11. And 12A, B, C, and D.
Thank you.
Hold on, I gotta, I gotta check that. Can we?
One moment?
Yeah.
We're also going to pull 12C for discussion. Okay, do you want to restate your motion? I can just say, one, another one?
Sorry about that. All right, we'll approve the consent agenda consisting of items 9A, 9B, 10A, 11A, 12A, and B, and D.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with items consisting of 9A, 9B, 10A, 11A, 12A, B, and D. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous, the motion is passed. We'll now take up item number 9C for discussion. I believe that's the sheriff's office is going to make the presentation.
Good morning. And it is a good morning. For the record, Sheriff Furlong, this is an agenda item to continue in one manner or another. A grant opportunity for Victims Advocate for Law Enforcement. When I say "continue" to some degree or another, what I mean by that is this grant was previously provided or in connection, in joint partnership with Advocates Office. This past year, the sheriff's office applied for a grant. We, we made the application for $80,000 in this grant. We have received notice that $55,000 was funded. In order to do that, we've made several adjustments to the grant, including removing some of the operating expenses, the travel, and certain certification allowances to maximize the salary and benefits into the, of the grant. This is a unique circumstance where the employee that is sitting in the position on a stop grant to carry us over from different grant cycles has even taken a salary reduction in order to achieve the best, best opportunity that we can. The challenge with this grant is that this is a year-by-year. And if we cannot secure funding down the road, obviously, this position would go away. We consider the position extremely vital as it works hand-in-hand with our behavioral health officers and our regular officers out on the road, primarily targeting domestic violence in this community. Our, our goal is to provide services to domestic, to, to families who suffer domestic issues. And, and we want to get those services onboard at the lowest level possible.
Questions? Sure? I'll start. Okay. So I noticed that you just put on the record that if the grant funding goes away, the position goes away. At what level? So my, my question is, right now, there's $55,000 in grants. So are you saying if they don't give us at least $55,000 each year, that the position, what if they give us 52?
Yeah, that's a fine hair to split.
Right.
We would have to reassess it. The reality of it is, as I've spoken to many of you, we don't have a crystal ball of where we're going. But we cannot continue to incur debts on the city just because of a grant opportunity when you have the, the matching funds or the insufficient funds to cover the positions. There are a number of priorities that would have to be considered. But in the case of this grant, the goal over the next 12 months, so to speak, will be to achieve a stronger proportion of that salaries and, and benefits range, and to be able to achieve those certifications that were originally requested in this current year's grant. I can't tell you if it, if it came in at 49, or excuse me, 54, 999, are we going to get away with it? No, I would not do that. I would certainly work with the board and city management and IFC. If it came in next year at 40,000, it would be a tough, tough pill to swallow to continue to take on a greater, greater burden if the city finances were not able to provide for it.
Do you have a question? Mr. Giomi?
Can I just, it came to me as you were talking. How does this, how will this position interface with the DA's victim witness coordinator?
We look very closely, and that's an excellent question. I'm surprised I didn't write that one down to bring it into here.
Well, you paid me to ask it, so.
Oh, did I?
So it's fine.
Now you have to. The difference is this. The DA's office has victims advocates that, that they receive and are processed in conjunction with not only just victims' rights, but cases that are being processed through the criminal justice system. That is a small number in comparison to the number of cases that we see. As, as Ms. Bagwell's aware, just last night, I was out on one where alcohol's involved, circumstances in the family are involved. They turn into domestic situations where no one is arrested. That, those types of circumstances are the target of this, this position. We choose to put services on, with those families before they escalate to a level of violence, understanding that in most, I shouldn't say that, in many, many domestic circumstances, once they reach that level of violence, that becomes a minimum level of accepted confrontation. We choose to try and reduce the incidence of domestic violence in this community by providing those services at a lower level that, those people that are not being arrested.
Okay, so you're, I mean, you're intervening sooner in the process, essentially.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, I, I don't mind just telling you, we've had the conversation that I really am struggling with this position because I, I really just don't think we can continue to add grant positions that then become general fund responsibilities to maintain them. And when we look at all of the priorities and things, so I'm trying to think in my mind what an appropriate way to make sure that this position then has to come back before us if the grant does not fund at the $55,000 for discussion, so that there's no automatic, I guess is what I'm trying to allude to. So, because it's an off-cycle of the budget. And that's why I'm struggling that you won't know if you don't have the grant till next August or September. And so I'm looking for a way that I can feel comfortable today to approve this, yet be assured that the position, we have to have an analysis of whether or not to continue the position if the grant reduces. Maybe that's the right way
Right.
to say it, that you'd have to come back next year. There's no automatic.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't he have to come back if the, for a grant approval next year?
We would have to come back
Yeah.
next year.
So the position would either get put into his budget, and we would see it and approve it then, or?
Well, that's, that's, that's the issue. We would be approving the position in the budget, but you would know it would be contingent upon getting the grant. That's what I'm trying to.
Plus, he would have to bring the grant back to us to accept in a year from now.
And that the person in the position realizes, is that I think that's the most important to me, is that the person recognizes they're on a year-to-year funding.
Yes, we work, we work closely with IFC and, of course, HR. And, and I can tell you of, of the many, many circumstances where Ms. Burketa has, has insisted, when we have grant positions, those have to be in that job offer. That the person accepting the position understands that they are in a grant. And if the grant is fails to be funded, then that position is eliminated, so that the employee has a full understanding.
Okay. Because it's important to me. I don't want someone to, to think they have a 10-year cycle unless the grant has the 10-year cycle to go with it.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Paulson?
They'll also have to come back next year just to even apply for the grant. So we'll know before they even get a grant award, they'll have to come with the application.
Okay. Any other questions from here? Any public comment on this item? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize the acceptance of the grant as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the acceptance of the grant. Any further discussion? I'm just, again, going to put on the record that as long as it's clear that the employee is aware that it's a year-to-year grant funding, then I can approve that. So, all those in favor? Aye? And you, motion carries. Thank you. Are we good to continue? The electronics are working? All good? Thank you. Okay, we're now going to move on to item 12C. Ms. Akers? Thank you.
Good morning. Carol Akers, Purchasing and Contracts. This is for the senior center lower gravel roof project. And it's a two-part. So we're going to be purchasing the supplies through, all the materials through a joint or contract with Garland DBS Inc. And then, Ponderosa Roofing was awarded, the actual installation, the labor part. So this is just to clear up, there are two corrections needed on the contract. This is not a federal-funded project on the first page of the contract. And then also, we're going to clear up that the materials will be provided to the contractor, right? Because we're purchasing directly. So the contractor's not doing the purchasing.
Further questions?
Yeah, which is paragraph 5.3, which states that the materials are included in the $111,000, which they're not. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion on item 12C, please.
I move to approve the, the purchase and the contract with the corrections stated on the record today.
I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the, and the contracts as amended on the record today. Any further discussion? There's only three of us, it's weird. All those in favor say aye? Aye? Okay, the motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, we're going to just continue to move on to item 14A. This is discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of Heather Cabral as the Public Guardian for a four-year term, beginning on September 19, 2019, through September 18, 2023, and to set the compensation at $70,000. Ms. Paulson, would you like to introduce Ms. Cabral?
Yes, so I'm very excited to introduce Heather Cabral as our next Public Guardian, and, or hopefully, our next Public Guardian. The interview panel consisted of Dan Yu, the Assistant DA, Supervisor Bagwell, and I. And we interviewed six different applicants. All of the panelists selected Heather, you know, as the top candidate, based on her education and her experience. She has a bachelor's in business administration, a master's in social work, and is almost finished with a master's in business administration. And she has many years of experience as a caseworker and a social worker, as well as she started her own nonprofit. So we're just very excited to have Heather join our team. She's here if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just welcome.
Thank you. I'm excited to serve the citizens and honored that I was chosen by the panelists.
So I, I will say that I, I just want to put on the record that I thought we really had a fine group of candidates. So for anyone that's listening, really, you just had a little bit of a cut above in the, in the experience and your education. And so we really welcome you to the city. And I just have the, I just think it's going to be a great fit, so.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay. I'll accept a motion.
I move to point Heather Cabral as the Public Guardian for the four-year term, for a four-year term, beginning September 19, 2019, through September 18, 2023, and to set the starting compensation at $70,000 a year.
Second for, second for discussion?
On discussion?
I just have a question on whether we should extend the term through the end of the, of the budget year?
I, I don't think, there are four-year appointments by statute, I think.
Yeah, it's an NRS, that it's a four-year.
Yeah, but what is four years? I mean, I want to make sure. I mean, I want to make sure that, because then we're partially funding the position over the year. So Dan, this is a question for you. If it's, if there's a way that we can extend the term through the end of our fiscal year or half-year through the end of the year, then would that be a convenience for us? Instead of ending it in the middle of a month, in the middle of the quarter?
We get away with September 30th.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding the question correctly, Supervisor. So if I understand your question, it's to extend it to September 30th?
Correct.
Is that correct? So the statute does say, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I do know that the appointment is for, for a four-year term. Boy, that's a, that's sort of a tough question.
What if, what if we, at the beginning of the fiscal year, reappointed her for a four-year term? So on July 1st of 2020, we put it on the agenda to reappoint her for a four-year term effective July 1st, 2020. We're appointing her for a four-year term, it puts it on our budget cycle, and much easier to account for positions that way.
You know, I, to the first question that was posed by Supervisor Bonkowski, you know, thinking about this, and this is sort of off the cuff, I think it's okay to extend it to September 30th, and the reason why is because, you know, this is coming in, in the middle of a vacancy, so to sort of fill out the remainder of the initial vacancy gap, and then it's the extension of the additional four years for the appointment. So I think I'm comfortable right now on the record, you know, for the appointment to last until the end of September. I'm happy to, of course, to revisit this, and if there is an issue with that appointment, we can bring it back if, if needed.
Going back to Stacy's question, if there's a way that we can align the position with our accounting for the fiscal year, then that would be my preference. If there's a way to do that, if you could look into that, then, then come back to us. Because we could appoint her to complete the initial term of Jean's, and then come back and make a new appointment for four years, but I don't think Jean's position aligned with the, right? So I'd like to clean this up if possible, if it's possible.
I, I'm sorry. I think these are all very good questions. You know, there's an ambiguity in the statute for the appointment of a public guardian. Unlike, for example, the filling of a vacancy for an elected or an otherwise appointed position where, you know, there are very specific provisions relating to what happens when there's a vacancy in the middle of a term, and for purposes of that gap fill, what happens when there's an extension for that additional appointment or the election of an official? With the public guardian statutes, it's, it's a little bit unclear, which is why I'm hesitant to make an assurance on the record today, but I'm happy to revisit both of these questions, and we'll bring it back to the board if necessary.
Thank you.
So my motion stands. Nancy has a comment?
Yeah, I think you just let the motion stand and fix it later.
I, I just wanted to add that, and it's required by NRS to have a public guardian, so it would be a position that we would budget for each year, regardless of, you know, when the term was up, so.
So I have a motion on the table to appoint Heather Cabral as the public guardian for a four-year term beginning on September 19, 2019, through September 18, 2023, and to set the starting compensation at $70,000 per year, and I have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Thank you, and we'll look forward to your comments, Mr. Yu, at a later date. You, and welcome. Get to work. Oh, sorry. Let's get the welcome correct. Thank you so very much. Okay, we're going to move on to our Purchasing in Contract section, 15A, which is for discussion and possible action concerning our Carson City Facilities Assessment and Reserve Study. Mr. Stuckey?
Thank you, Dan Stuckey, City Engineer, for the record. Yeah, as I think the board knows, this is when the asset management program was created back in 2016, this is probably our number-one, number-two goal for the program. We're thankful for the board for helping fund this study. If, if it were approved today, basically, I'll, I'll try to break it down. It's to have experts basically come out, assess all of our buildings, facilities, parks, prioritize the needs from a capital side, also set up preventative maintenance programs that'll help kind of feed into our asset management program. And it's really going to drive decisions into the future. We'll forecast out not only capital projects for the, you know, 20, 30-year horizon, but also, you know, maintenance, repair needs as well, so help kind of drive those decisions. I did want to talk about a little bit about the competitive process. We, we issued a competitive request for qualifications back in June. We received eight proposals, really good proposals, we were really impressed. It was hard to, hard to pick a, a clear winner, but Faithful and Gold really stood out. Project experience in very similar types of size cities, as far as, you know, number of facilities analyzed, they had a lot of really good experience there. They have experts in every trade that will be out working with our facilities, maintenance staff, so electrical, mechanical, structural, et cetera. Their analytics are really advanced, we really like that. They also, I think, stood out, we asked for deliverables of sample reports that, you know, what we would get. They have a really easily digestible report that I think is very clear to run through, and then they have, I think, very detailed cost estimating, which is obviously important for, for determining those capital needs in the future. I did want to point out that they did attach a, a proposed schedule with their scope and fee in the back. I wanted to kind of break it down, our, one of our goals, and we, we talked with this when we were negotiating scope and fee with them, is to be able to have some data upfront, some reports upfront that could help drive decisions for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. So the way the schedule's broken out, the first three kind of assessment periods, we're going to try to address most of the general fund buildings, as well as some of the critical parks, and use that data, so we'll have that by a January timeframe to help kind of make those decisions for next fiscal year. And then more of the, the public works type water and sewer-funded buildings, those will probably happen in the early spring, those assessments. But anyway, we're excited about this study, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Yeah, just, not so many questions, but just a couple of comments. This is actually something that I've been working towards, one of my very highest priority goals since I got here, seven years ago. So this is a happy day for me. I think this is going to be an invaluable tool for the city for planning. I also like their, their barcoding. That's going to be a big deal for, sorry, I've been geeking out here, but barcodes are great, for being able to track inventory and, and the lifespan of, of equipment. So, you know, this goes back to when Danny Rodder and Darren and I met in probably 2013. So for me, it's been a long time coming, I'm happy to see it.
So, I, I just have a question so that I can understand the study. So what if I buy a brand-new asset? Since this is a study and puts it together, is that, how do you update for a brand-new asset? Not one that was part of the recommendation cycle that said it's time to replace X, but we actually add a new asset? How, how does that work?
Yeah, no, it's an excellent question. You know, I look at it as this is building the foundation, the methodology, the process that we're going to use in the future when new assets come on board, and be able to just basically plug those into this process that we're forming with this study. The other thing to consider, depending on what the asset that we add in the future, you know, our facilities staff is going to be out there shadowing these guys, directing them where to go, they're going to learn the process. And so depending on the complexity of the asset that we add, it is something that, you know, for future assessments, we could probably handle some of the stuff in-house if it's more of a, you know, something in our wheelhouse of expertise. But it's all about creating the methodology and the process, and we think we can move forward with that and be able to implement future assets pretty easily.
So, so you see yourself writing a procedure manual, kind of that comes, that your staff will be doing then, like you said, as a side-by-side?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
So that we have a, I, I just hate, I love the study, I love what we're doing, certainly, like you said, I think, I think I've been Brad's other champion on this, but I just want to make sure it's, it is a building block, and we don't, we don't lose the process five years from now and 10 years from now.
Yeah, no.
Document a process.
I think it's, like I said, building that foundation is something with, yeah, like you say, we can build off in the future. Now, as far as, you know, this doesn't necessarily mean we won't need this 10 years ago, somebody else with expertise to come in and kind of reanalyze some stuff, because there's some facilities or buildings or components of the facilities that are very complex, and you need a very specialized person to look at, but it is laying the foundation to be able to bring on new assets in the future.
I, I wonder too, if when we purchase new asset items, we can actually get the correct information from the vent, anyway, just a thought, is to put in place that you get the right data that you need to program a new asset in the first place into the program? So, I think I saw lights, Mr. Giomi?
You, you kind of answered my question, I just, you know, a lot like the, the water study that we paid for, that is sort of an asset, becomes a softer asset that we can program and manage going forward. I, I just wanted to ask you if that, if that's a similar process here, if we're going to try to identify some folks within Public Works, maybe one or two that, that can kind of be leads and, and help us go through this. And, and obviously, there's always one-offs. I mean, if, if we somehow decide we're going to acquire a nuclear power plant, I, I understand that, you know, Darren's probably not going to go right in and inspect that. But, so you answered the question. Thank you.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Yeah, I think you have two of the team leaders here, and then whoever backfills Stephanie's place, that's really your team. You've got GIS, Engineering, Property Management, and the database for GIS and, and the information from the asset study, it's a living document. So when you, we buy a new asset, it gets plugged in, and it's automatically calculated out over the lifespan of that new asset. It calculates in the cost, the prorata cost for the reserves. So most of this work should be done automatically within the database. So you can add or delete things, and the number, the bottom-line number always changes somewhat.
Stumbles in it.
Based on, on the formulas in the, in the program. At least, that's my understanding of it, so.
Is that correct? We have the database placed?
Yeah, so I, thanks Supervisor Bonkowski. So the way I envision it is, and I think this is what you're hitting on, you know, when future assets, the barcoding, for example, so when we're going out and our maintenance staff, work orders are, are going to, all going to be tracked to that individual component, so we're just building on that as we bring it in the future. And so, yes, it'll go into our database, all work orders, preventative maintenance will be tracked to that individual component, and so we'll really have a good sense of dollars spent on certain items. Reoccurring preventative maintenance, work orders will be automatically triggered out. This is the vision that we have for the future with this, kind of laying the foundation for that.
Well, and that gets me to, so we have all these new project developments that the city isn't building, but, but someone else is building, that's adding roads that we do have to take care of, or is adding water lines and things that become our responsibility, that they don't start out that way. So we have a trigger to make sure that gets into the database?
Yes, all new. This is a little different, the, the question you asked is a little different, because roads, I mean, this isn't covering roads and pipes and those things, this is more, you know, facility-based, but yes, as new pipes are getting built, they get inputted into our GIS database and can be tracked.
Further questions? Is there any public comment? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I'd be happy to make it. I move to approve the contract as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the table to approve the contract as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to item 16A. Mr. Giomi, you have a disclosure, please?
I do indeed. NRS 281A dot 420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I serve as an unpaid board member of Advocates to Domestic Violence, a private nonprofit organization. Currently Advocates to Domestic Violence is the owner of two parcels that are immediately adjacent to one of the city-owned properties being considered on this agenda item for possible sale in the future. But because I do not have a personal or economic interest in the organization's real property assets, any potential benefit that the organization may realize as the result of this board's actions on this item would be no greater than the general benefit to all owners of property near the land, and also because any beneficial or detrimental effect to Advocates to Domestic Violence as the, the result of any action by this board is only speculative at this point. I do not have a disqualifying conflict. I make this disclosure for full transparency, but I will be voting on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Giomi. Okay, this item deals with an action regarding a proposed resolution for the city's intent to sell property located on Brown Street. Which ones? Stephanie, you going to take us through this? Thank you.
Thank you, good morning, for the record, Stephanie Hicks. The board probably recalls that in January, we brought forward a couple of items for discussion, and the board directed staff to do our due diligence on the property so that we could bring it forward in the future for disposal. The Brown Street properties are, are one of the two that we'll be talking about today. These, these properties were received by the city back in about 2004. They were given to the city at no cost because the coalition who had purchased them for affordable housing, the, the projects just was, was not coming forward. We've held it for that same intention since that time, and again, we have not been able to bring an affordable housing project forward on this site. I do want to make a correction in our staff summary for both this item and the following item. Our recommendations got reversed in the summary, but in the background, they are correct. So what we're bringing before the board today is an option of two different ways that we can dispose of this property. Pursuant to NRS 244.281 and 244.282, we have an option to do a public auction that would be held at the board, and the property would not be able to be disposed for less than fair market value. The second option is to dispose pursuant to 244.2815 for the purposes of redevelopment or economic development, and that would afford for a direct sale, and the opportunity, if the board chose to, to sell the property for less than fair market value. We were, we did have some discussions very, very recently with a potential developer who was, who thought they may be interested again, it was a nonprofit. And again, because of the inability to be able to acquire additional acreage in the vicinity, they just couldn't bring the, the project to feasibility as well. So that was a very recent change. So staff is recommending that we sell the property according to 244.281 and 282, which would be the public auction, and not for less than fair market value. Just a few other things that I did want to bring to the board's attention. So since January, we did prepare due diligence, we had a title report completed, as well as a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, which did not identify any issues with the project site. And one appraisal was completed, which valued out the prop, valued the property at $300,000. I did want to note a correction that was brought to our attention by Supervisor Bonkowski, that there was some discussion on page 19 of that appraisal report regarding our growth management ordinance, and the fact that, or their statement, that allocations roll over from year to year, and that doesn't seem to limit growth in the city. That is incorrect. We, you know, we don't have a carryover, we determine those allocations annually. And there, there is a difference that is shrinking between what is available and what is being requested, so it, it is different than how it was stated in there. One of the other things I wanted to identify is that as part of our resolution, because we only had one appraisal completed, which is allowable by NRS, the Board of Supervisors does need to set the fair market value of the property, and we've allowed for that in the resolution. So for some background, if the board approves the sale-by-auction, there are, there are some recommendations that we've placed in the resolution as well. Offers may be all cash, or a 25% cash down with financing that would need to be secured by the purchaser. We're requesting a $15,000 security deposit to come in from the highest and second-highest bidder, to be paid within two days of selection, and that deposit will be credited towards the purchase price. And then we would require payment in full to be received within 30 days. We will hold the security deposit of the second-highest bidder until payment is received from the highest bidder, and the quitclaim deed is recorded. And then if the highest bidder fails to submit the full payment within 30 days, the security deposit will be forfeited to the city as liquidated damages, not as a penalty, and then the property would be offered to the second bidder. So that just provides us some assurances, and those are staff's recommendations. The process itself is that bypassing of the resolution, we would set the public auction on October 17th. We do have an opportunity to go out one more meeting if, if that is a, a better date for the board, so what, the only thing we're trying to stick within is our timeframe for the appraisal, so we have a little bit of flexibility. Right now, we set it for October 17th. And then staff will advertise as required by statute, we do have to do a three weeks notification in the paper. If the resolution is approved at that, then sealed written bids will be accepted up until 8:30 on the date of that meeting. And the, at the meeting, the board can then call for additional oral bids. One of the things that we, we needed to correct in our staff report on the third page, so oral bids for a price exceeding the highest written bid by 5% or 105% of that highest bid. bid. We didn't have the "by" in there, so it made it sound like they just needed to give us 5% of the highest bid. So we want to correct that for the record. If someone comes in and they have a bid of 105% of that highest, then the board must accept that. And the highest oral or written bid is then found as the qualifying bid. And then thereafter, the board can choose to accept that highest bid, reject any and all bids, or withdraw the property from sale.
Yeah. So first, I have a question on the, on what you just stated. So if someone is in the audience bids 105%, can the person who they outbid also bid? So we would just--
Yes.
We would actually conduct an auction, much like Brad did a couple of weekends ago at the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes, that's correct.
Hopefully better, yeah. And then I have another question, but go ahead, Brad. I think yours is about process.
Right. What I heard you just say, Stephanie, was that if somebody bids 105% or 5% over the accepted bid, that we must accept that. But they're still subject to all the rest of the conditions here, so we don't have to accept it until they've proven that they can comply with the rest of the conditions.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So it's kind of a, well, we can, are you done? Because I have a, okay. May I? So, you know, short of spending public money, there's not a lot government can do, in my opinion, for affordable housing. I mean, it's largely market-driven. So in this case, we have property that we own that we could try to contribute to an affordable housing project. So I guess what I'm asking, before we go down this path of disposing this in the way you're talking about, are you confident that if we were to not dispose of it in this fashion, but dispose of it in the fashion that we were or are disposing of the Budai Way property, that we wouldn't get any bidders? I mean, is that your thought, that no one would bid on that property?
We, so for the past several years, I've been part of the Workforce Housing Committee, and we've had developers and nonprofits and Nevada Rural Housing and others that are participants in that meeting. So when we started having the conversation about this property, as well as the Budai property, you know, we've advised everyone who has expressed interest to us that this property is available for affordable housing. And every response that I've received to date has been, it's just not big enough to make the property pencil.
And that availability that you've discussed with them has been, from the perspective of offering them the property for nothing, correct?
It has been--
I mean, that's been part of the discussion.
Part of the discussion, right.
Not that you're committing. I'm not trying to say that you're committing on behalf of the city.
Exactly.
But that's been the foundation for the discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
If I could follow up on that, this particular property is, it's too small for an affordable housing project. It's more likely that it would be developed with duplexes, triplex, fourplex, smaller buildings by a private developer, and it's also priced in the range that would meet the financial feasibility of a private developer. So in this particular case, at this particular site, in this particular price range, it seems like this is the best method to use.
So if we go down this path, then we still have two questions to resolve, because we need to fill in item two. The fair market value of the property is, so we need to determine that, and the minimum price of the auction shall be. So we have, the appraisal was $300,000?
That's correct. The appraisal was $300,000, and then just as a reminder, the minimum bid has to be that fair market value. So although those are blank, they ultimately will be the same.
So Supervisor Bonkowski, do you have a comment?
That particular price range works out to $2.50 a foot, which is in the parameters for building multifamily. Generally, that's up to 3, 3.50 a foot for the land. Construction costs have gone up, so that may push the land value down, but it's still in that price range where a private developer could buy it at 2.50 a foot and make it work.
So you're suggesting that we just put it at the appraisal, and that's a valid methodology that we utilize to establish this? Mr. Giomi, did you have any other comment? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? No? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back up here. Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, let me try this. We need a resolution number?
19R27.
I move to adopt resolution number 2019R27, determining that the market value of the property in question is $300,000, as determined by appraisal, that $300,000 will be the minimum bid at auction, and that we are referring to the second resolution in our packet, which is page 719 and 720.
So that's NRS 244.281 and 244.282?
Correct.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And we'll move on to 16B. This is for possible action regarding a proposed resolution for the city's intent to sell property off of Medical Parkway. Ms. Hicks, thank you.
Kathy, this keeps going back to 9C in between, so we don't have an option to mark motion or no motion. We can vote, but we--
I can't even get that. I'm not even getting votes, so just keep going. She's recording it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. 16A, please.
Thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks. So the second item before you, in regards to disposal of property, is the parcels owned by the city off of Medical Parkway. Again, just for the record, our recommendation in the staff report is incorrect, but it is correct in the background. In regards to these parcels, we actually purchased larger parcels back in 2002 and 2003 for the detention basins that you see that are to the west of Medical Parkway. As that development came in and Medical Parkway was constructed, these properties were actually bisected from the parent parcels, and so they were established as separate individual parcels totaling approximately 1.6 acres. We, again, are bringing forward to the board two different options for these disposals. We can either do it pursuant to 244.281 and 282 through a public auction and for not less than fair market value, or there is an option to sell pursuant to 244.2815 for the purposes of redevelopment or economic development. In this case, we have had discussions with an interested party, and it's Carson Tahoe Hospital has reached out to us and let us know that they are interested. They were one of the two property owners that we originally purchased the acreage from. And so staff is recommending that we have an opportunity to work with them for purchase of the property. We, again, this particular NRS allows for sale at not less than fair market value. That's not what staff's recommending. It's just an option in the NRS. And then there was a suggestion, which I think is a great stipulation, that the private party make an offer to us maybe within 15 days, so that we can facilitate this moving on. And if that's not gonna work out, then we do have a couple other options. Under the approval, we could reach out to other private entities in the area and see if they were interested before we bring it back to the board, and then have a discussion about an auction. So there's a few opportunities with that. One other recommendation that we have within the staff report is that the proceeds from the sale go to drainage improvements on South Carson Street. I think the recommended approach, and we've discussed with the finance department, is the funds can be deposited into the general fund and then transferred to capital, so they can be used towards that. Originally, when the project came forward, money came out of the general funds for the Eagle Valley Detention Basin, because there wasn't a stormwater fund at that time. And so with selling the property, we'd like to utilize it for those same purposes, the proceeds for those same purposes, but specifically for South Carson Street. We did also perform our due diligence on this title report, Phase 1 environmental. Again, nothing came back of concern on either. The appraised value for these two properties together, which we are recommending selling them together, is $905,000. And again, just for the record, we want to make a correction. The appraisal did talk about the growth management ordinance not having a constraint, and as we discussed on the previous item, that's incorrect. We don't carry over allotments in Carson City. As part of the resolution, again, we need to set a fair market value of the property. And I have the same outlines and conditions if we were to go the auction route, but we can discuss that further if the board has questions.
So do we have questions with Ms. Hicks, Mr. Giomi?
Yeah. So on the determination that we're selling in for economic development or redevelopment purposes, it doesn't, I mean, how is that defined? And I assume we've determined that it meets that criteria?
This is Todd Reese, Deputy DA, for the record. The economic development and redevelopment are very, very broadly defined. And if anybody, if a developer or anybody who purchases this property is proposing to build buildings, really, of any type, whether it's a new business or an existing business, that will all fall within the definition of redevelopment or economic development.
Regardless of whether it's now or in 25 years?
That's a question that I would have to research a little bit more. The development, I did not see any timeframes, or I do not recall any timeframes, and the definitions of development or economic, redevelopment or economic development, but--
So like a parking lot wouldn't qualify in your mind? Because that's what happens to be adjacent to one of these parcels.
Right. I'm not sure if a parking lot specifically would qualify.
Okay. And Stephanie, have they, has the interested buyer expressed what their desire is for the property?
No, not specifically. I have not had that conversation with them.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? No?
Just a comment that, you know, I looked at the appraised value here. It's in the range that I expected it to be in. You know, I can guess at why they would be interested in it. You know, they are in expansion mode. We approved bonding capacity so that they could expand the campus, so it would make sense that they would want the additional land, since it's adjacent. So I'm happy with the information that we have here and ready to move forward.
Supervisor Bagwell, if I can clarify one thing for the record. The statutes here have a little bit different effect. Going under NRS 244.2815 for redevelopment or economic development, that does require the board to set the fair market value, and then it can be sold for, under the fair market value. Going under NRS 244.281, subsection 1E1, roman numeral 1, is the sale of the property to an adjacent property owner, and the fair market value doesn't have an impact on that sale. The city could negotiate whatever price it felt appropriate.
Thank you for the clarification. Supervisor Bonkowski?
So Todd, based on what you just said, the resolution that we're proposing covers both of those, so that means you can pretty much do whatever you want. Right? So do we want to tighten that language up and specify which one of those two statutes we're approving the resolution under, or include both of them?
That's a great question, Supervisor Bonkowski. The resolution was written purposely to give discretion, either to go under either statute. So it checks off the boxes for going under both statutes, and then--
If I could rephrase the question, when we sell it, will we have to make a determination at that time which statute we're selling it under, so that we kind of clean up the record?
Yes, that's my, that's what I would anticipate, yes.
And just for a little further clarification, and I'm glad the question came up. So the uniqueness for Carson Tahoe Hospital under the 244.281, subsection 1E1L, is the fact that they are an adjacent property owner, and that property got bisected. But again, staff's recommendation wouldn't be to sell it for less than fair market value, so by allowing us to keep the other statute in there for economic development, there could be an opportunity to speak to another interested party before we'd come back if we weren't able to, you know, come to an arrangement.
Mr. Giomi?
Can we, in our motion, specify that we don't want it sold for less than fair market value? As we have said it? Because we're going to be setting it.
That's also a good question, and it's a little bit more, the answer's a little bit more complex. The, you could do that under 244.281, 1E1, roman numeral 1, but under 244.2815 for economic or economic development or redevelopment, that statute specifically provides that the board has to find that it's, the sale will be not to the public generally and for less than, less than fair market value. So if you specify then that it has to be sold for, for market value, it conflicts with the findings necessary for economic development or redevelopment. Yeah, it's, it is a may the, Harold, bear with me for just a second.
Todd, do we need a slight recess for you to take a look at it before we move down a motion path?
Sure.
Let's take just--
Yeah, but based on Supervisor Giomi's question--
Let's take a look at it.
Yeah, let's take a look at it.
Back to the point I was trying to make, too, is that the two statutes have conflicting provisions. So if we approve a resolution that has both of them in there, I'm not sure that that's clear direction to you.
Why don't we just go ahead and just come back at quarter till, and we'll give the DA's office just an opportunity to take a look at that, and we'll resume in 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to bring the Board of Supervisors back to order, and we'll continue on our discussion on item 16B. Supervisor Bonkowski, I believe you were working on a question with the DA's office.
Well, we've worked through the different findings that have to be made, and so if there's any further discussion, let's go through that, and I'm ready to make a motion when we're ready.
Okay. Let me, let me then just ask for some public comment, just to make sure. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we can bring it back up to...
So you're going to address my question that I asked, which was, can we specify?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Bonkowski, if you'd like to run through.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution 2019 R28 to sell properties on Medical Parkway known as APN 007531-13 and 007531-14 pursuant to NRS 244.281, subsection 1, subsection E, subsection 1, subsection Roman numeral 1, to make the finding that the sale is in the best interest of the city and the parcels are remnants that were separated from their original parcels by the construction of Medical Parkway, setting the market value at $905,000, and providing for a 30-day, 30 calendar day period for adjoining property owners to submit offers to the city for the sale.
Is there a second for discussion? I'll give you a second for discussion. Okay. So on discussion?
So on the 30-day period, does that mean you'll be talking to all adjoining property owners during that 30-day period, or you're just going to hope that someone talks to us?
We will reach out to Carson Tahoe Hospital. They are the adjoining property owner on both sides, so they would be the one property owner we would be discussing at this point.
So there's only one adjoining property owner?
Right.
Okay.
The intent would be that if the adjoining property owner does not want to make an offer within 30 calendar days, then this will come back to the board and we'll pass another resolution under, yeah, under 244.2815.
Were you going to specify the sale or the proceeds to be used for future drainage projects as part of the motion?
Mr. DA, do we need to include that? It's in the staff report? It's read into the record as a recommendation?
It is in the staff report. It is read into the record as a recommendation. That's up to your discretion.
And at the direction of the board? Lori, would you like that in there?
Well, so first and foremost, it's my understanding that we purchased it with general fund dollars. Are you telling me because, did storm drain dollars used to deposit into the general fund? Or did, they did? I'd like a clarification, please, because I'm, sorry, but I'm really big about funds going back where they, where they came from.
Yeah, storm water didn't exist until sometime in the 90s, so we bought this in the 70s.
So storm water dollars were not used. General fund was used.
Oh.
I think it was more in 2002 or 2004 that we purchased it.
But we did not have storm, so stormwater funds were not used to purchase the property to put it back. What we're really trying to say is we need money for the project from storm, I need a little more as to why we think this should have to be deposited. Could we do that as a separate discussion when we do the sale? I don't know that it needs to be part of this motion and that we could make that determination when a sale document comes to us where we want to put the proceeds.
My understanding, and Darren, you can clarify this if I'm not correct, but the original money came from funds allocated for the Eagle Valley Detention Basin. So it was intended as money for the storm drainage system of the city, but we didn't have a storm drainage utility fund or enterprise fund at that time. And that's why the recommendation is, since it originally came from the intent to use for storm drainage, that it should go back to storm drainage.
This, the timing of this was exactly when the stormwater utility was being formed, the exact time that it was, but it wasn't formally established when this went through. But that was the nexus that we drew here, was that it was purchased for a detention basin specifically to protect the freeway, which was required by NDOT that we purchased the property. So that was the nexus to, that this money should go back to the stormwater fund, and we at Public Works would like to use it down on South Carson Street to complete the stormwater work that needs to be done there as part of that project. The second part is just strictly a suggestion that we made to finish our work down there.
Would this complete that work?
It would. It would. So that, that portion down there, some of you are aware, it's, it's the section between Road Street and Fairview, which is the last section of stormwater that needed to be completed between 5th and the freeway. It was left out of the project because we didn't have funding, but the further we got into design of South Carson Street, if we could do that as part of the project and not have to come in later when we have money, it, we determined it would be much, much better to do it now. So because stormwater utility is basically broke, we would not be doing that portion of the project until into the future, till funds could be found somewhere.
I'd like it in personally.
It takes three votes, let me remind you. I think they're two distinct discussions, and I don't have a problem having a discussion about the money going to stormwater, but I think this resolution, they're two distinct discussions. So I'd like to have the motion dealing with the resolution, and then on our future agenda item, we certainly can discuss where the proceeds will go, because I'd like to see some project answers first before I dedicate $905,000 all to stormwater. Your project might come in at $700,000, so I'm not opposed to looking at giving proceeds to stormwater. I just don't know that I'm prepared to allocate $905,000 without date details.
The intent of this item is that the money goes back to the general fund?
Anyway, right.
With it then being transferred to the utility enterprise fund. So can we have an agenda item then, would come at the next meeting or the meeting after that?
Because we'll know.
With the transfer from, from the general fund over to storm drainage?
Yep, that would be acceptable.
And this, this does have to come back to us. This, I mean, this resolution doesn't grant you the authority to do this without one more board action, even under this?
That's my interpretation, yes, is that the eventual sale of, or the contract for the sale of the property would come before the board for approval.
And we can have an agenda item to transfer funds to. Thank you.
So at this point, then, I would not need to amend the motion, because the money's automatically going back to the general fund at this point, and we'll deal with that when the new agenda item comes back in a meeting or two?
Mm-hmm.
Real good.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 2019 R28 utilizing NRS 244.281 1E1I. That's got a lot of little initials. At the fair market value of the property at $905,000. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye. And with the condition of 30 days.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. We are now going to move on to item 16C, which is a proposal of a resolution declaring it's in the best interest of the city and its residents to offer a reconvenance on 449 West King Street, also known as the Brewery Arts Center. Who's going to, that's Stephanie? Would you take us through item 16C, please?
Thank you. Again, for the record, Stephanie Hicks. So the parcel before you is 449 West King Street, currently owned by the city, south of West King Street and east of South Minnesota. The Brewery Arts Center does have property to the west of this, including the parking lot and the old church, but our parcel is specifically the one that is outlined in blue and the one we'll be discussing today. As far as some background, so in June of, June 22nd, I'm sorry, that should be 1977, Carson City Arts Alliance was purchased, they purchased 449 West King Street from the Nevada Appeal. And that was done actually through a collaboration of efforts and fundraising that they received from private donors, other members of the public, the city, as well as the Nevada Arts Association. And so, but the purchase itself was done by the Carson City Arts Alliance, which later became the Brewery Arts Center. Before the property was deeded to the city, the city actually entered into a lease agreement with the Brewery Arts Center to indicate that upon receiving the property, the city would lease it back to the Brewery Arts Center and that it would be used, its sole purpose is for, to be an art center for the community. And so in, on June 30th, the property was deeded to the city. In September of that same year, the city was awarded a federal economic development grant in the amount of $205,000 and some change for remodeling and construction of the art center. And that has, that brought in the remodeling and the additional construction on the building that's been used to this day. It took us quite some time to track down that grant from the 70s, and so we have been in very recent discussion with the Federal Economic Development Authority to make sure that we, we don't have any additional restrictions. Verbally, our discussion has been that a maximum life on these projects is 40 years. We've, we've had the property for 42, or the grant for 42, so we exceed that amount, but we still are working with EDA to obtain a written release. So we want to make sure that we do have that before the final reconvenance deed is executed. So staff is bringing this forward to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the property be reconveyed back to the Brewery Arts Center. We have, in recent years, in our discussions with the Brewery Arts Center, we actually came to a realization that maintenance, subleasing, everything in regards to the property is, the responsibility of that is through the Brewery Arts Center and not through the city. And while we helped facilitate bringing the art center to the community through the EDA grant, there really is no longer any responsibility for the city or municipal use for the city. And so we feel that it's an appropriate time to reconvey the property, and we have been speaking with the Brewery Arts Center. I believe Gina Hill is here today, and she can come up and present that as well. But we, so we feel this is a great opportunity to reconvey. There's a few steps that we'll need to take. The first step will be to authorize the city engineer to make a written offer of reconvenance at no cost to the Brewery Arts Center. There'll be a 45-day period for the Brewery Arts Center to accept that, during which we'll finalize our discussions with EDA, so we make sure we have everything in place. We did do a title guarantee on the property, and nothing came back that had any restrictions in regards to the grant, but again, we just want to finalize that. And then upon acceptance by the Brewery Arts Center, the mayor is authorized to execute the deed of reconvenance. And with that, we're available if you have any questions.
Any questions with Ms. Hicks?
And I just wanted to read into the record, over the last four years, the city, although we were not mandated to, the city spent approximately $100,000 in maintenance. The numbers are $50,671 in equivalent salary and benefits, $12,029 in in-house materials, and contract work of $35,915. And... And upcoming estimated maintenance costs are approximately $385,000 in roofing expense, $85,000 for an elevator upgrade, $35,000 for exterior painting, for a total of just under $506,000. So I think that this is a good time to separate responsibilities and kind of send the BAC down the path, you know, that they've now spent 40 years working towards, which is to have their own facility and to be responsible for it.
Mr. Giomi?
In the original deed of dedication, there was language broadly talking about maintaining the property as specific for use in arts. Is there an intention to keep that language going forward? Or was that not the intention?
I'm sorry, we weren't going to specifically place anything within the deed, although we could. But that really, I think, was more of a restriction on the city, that we couldn't then take the property that had been deeded to us and use it for another purpose. It had to remain for an art center. And I do believe that that's the intent of the Brewery Arts Center moving forward, but it was not something we currently have in the reconvenance deed.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, you know, I know it really wasn't our building to begin with, but it has been for 40 years, and the city's put quite a bit of money into it over the time. And I would, and I don't think Brewery Arts Center, under their current board or current executive director, has any intention to do anything differently. But if we do this without that language in there, they could, in two years, turn it into a newspaper again, or a brewery again. And I just, I don't know, I don't know how I feel about that. I mean, I'm, I think I'd like to see the language continue. But, you know, I'd like to hear from Gina and see if that's an issue. But I'd like to see it stay as in arts and have that deed restriction placed on it.
I know. Okay. And I'll comment. I really don't want to restrict. I think I'd like to see it stay as arts, but I don't want to restrict it to that. There may be, they may not be able to maintain it as an arts, and then we'll have a building that would remain vacant or be in flux because they have no other options. Maybe they only want to use, I really don't want to place the restrictions on them. I think that their board certainly has that goal. But it's up to Gina whether she wants to come to comment on that, on whether she'd like a deed restriction. But I just don't think that's in our best interest to restrict them from activities. I'd like the building to stay viable.
Thank you. This is Gina Hill for the record. We fully intend to keep the Brewery Arts Center an art center for the community. As we have with the property that we own across the street, it is a private entity used for public, used for the public benefit. So that is our full intention. It's a lot of money to maintain that building, and so we don't know what the future holds. So I would appreciate, there not be restrictions, because we may have to have joint use with other entities in order to maintain that space. As Supervisor Bonkowski pointed out, it costs a lot of money, and we don't have a lot of money right now. We're at the mercy of our, of our community.
Thank you. Further questions? Is there any further public comment? Okay, are we ready for a motion? Supervisor Bonkowski?
I move to adopt Resolution 2019 R-29, subject to written confirmation that we have met the conditions of our holding period and other conditions of the original grant obtained by the city prior to reconvenance of the deed.
Is there a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We're going to move on to planning now. So Item 17A is to request an order of abandonment for the public right-of-way, specifically South Minnesota, between West Second and West King. That was just in between the Brewery Arts Centers, two properties. Ms. Sullivan or Ms., is listed on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There we go. I have up on the screen the picture of the area that's proposed to be abandoned. The subject property is a portion of the right-of-way located adjacent to and between the properties containing the Brewery Arts Center and the Performance Hall. This section of street has been blocked with boulders and planters for a couple of years now. Prior to the current condition, the section of right-of-way was closed sporadically to accommodate special events. The Board of Supervisors is authorized to abandon a right-of-way. The Planning Commission conducts a public hearing and makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at their meeting of August 28, 2019, and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the abandonment, subject to conditions of approval. I do want to highlight two of those conditions of approval. Condition number five was a change from the staff report. The staff report didn't recognize that there should be a public drainage easement. So this portion of right-of-way that is abandoned, should it be abandoned, would be retained as a public utility easement and a public drainage easement over the entirety of the segment, to allow for utilities and to ensure that future improvements would not impede flood surface flows or stormwater drainage. Secondly, condition of approval number six was reworked at the Planning Commission. And what that would say is if utility work is required on the easement, the surface repair may be limited to city standards for asphalt, concrete, and base material and thickness, and there will be no obligation to repair to the pre-existing surface conditions. The concern of the staff was in abandoning this, given that it is a public utility easement and a public drainage easement, should improvements be made, like special pavers or things like that, that's burdensome to the utility who needs to go in there to make the repair. And so we'd want a future owner to be on notice that although you may do improvements in that property that are not in conflict with the easements, the obligation of the person servicing those utilities is limited. And they're not obligated to put improvements back exactly the way they were, but they are obligated to meet city standard. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions. Stephanie Hicks is the applicant. And that's what I have.
Questions? Supervisor Bonkowski?
Gina, if you could come up. If I remember correctly, this is like the third time that I voted on approving an abandonment subject to conditions for this property. And then the conditions weren't met or complied with. So have you read the conditions? And is it your feeling that the Brewery Arts Center can comply with those conditions and during a reasonable amount of time?
Those conditions, any time we applied for this was before I was actually with the Brewery Arts Center. So since the annual abandonment that we've had, starting in 2015, we have been compliant of all the conditions, the drainage, and with our master plan that we are working on for a placemaking project encompassing the two city blocks, we are certainly working with the city to keep everything that needs to be done, done correctly, so that the city is happy.
So my question was, do you feel like you can comply with all the conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my, so how much longer will it be rocks?
Well, we will be, as soon as we have-
That's the question, I think, for me.
One of the concerns was actually getting ownership of the street and of the 449 building. We're talking with many entities after this happens, and local business owners who are going to help us with the master plan and a capital campaign to connect the two campuses on a permanent basis.
Are there questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back up here. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I move to approve an order of abandonment for AB-19-122, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval recommended by the Planning Commission and presented to us today.
I have a motion and a second to approve the order of abandonment. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 17B, which is discussion and possible action regarding a request on an order, oops, C. We're moving right along. We're going to move on to the tentative subdivision map, known as the Silvercrest condominiums. No, B.
We are on B.
Oh, I need two parts of B. Never mind. Sorry. Go ahead. Never mind. Abandonment, another one. Yeah. Another abandonment.
Heather Ferris, for the record. The area of abandonment is within the Plateau tentative subdivision map project area, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors on December 20th, 2018. If approved, the entire right-of-way area highlighted here would be abandoned. This includes portions of Draco Way between Astro Way and Morgan Mill Road, the entirety of Unicorn and Caribou Drives, and a small portion of Morgan Mill Road, which lies within the boundaries of the Plateau development. In total, the area to be abandoned is 6.706 acres and is unimproved. The abandoned right-of-way would revert back to the adjacent parcels. Staff has also concurrently processed a lot line adjustment for the parcels adjacent to this abandonment. As part of the lot line adjustment, the applicant will be creating new access and public utility easements that will ensure the parcels will have access. Staff has recommended a condition of approval requiring the concurrent processing and recording of this lot line adjustment to ensure that the access is provided to each lot. The new access and public utility easements will be consistent with the roadways that are shown in the Plateau development tentative subdivision map. The Planning Commission considered this request at their August 28, 2019, meeting, and voted 7-0 to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors, based on the findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in your staff report. Chris Baker with Manhard Consulting is here on behalf of the applicant, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions with staff? Supervisor Bonkowski?
So if I understand correctly, these are easements that were recorded for the future construction of roads for a map. And now there is a new proposed development for that property, so they intend to redesign the streets for the new project, proposed project, and that's the purpose of the abandonment.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a potential motion.
I move to approve an order of abandonment for AB-19-104, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
There's a motion and a second on the table to approve an order of abandonment for AB-19-104. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. 17C instead of the second abandonment. Okay. Ms. Sullivan, will you take us through the agenda item known as the Silvercrest condominiums for the tentative map?
Yes. Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Oak Street and Roland Street. The applicant is proposing a tentative map for 51 condominium units on three acres. Per the provisions of the Municipal Code Title 17, when you consider a condominium complex, it needs both a tentative map and a special use permit. So the staff report to the Planning Commission addressed both, the findings for both the tentative map and the special use permit. The Planning Commission was authorized to approve the special use permit. They made a recommendation to the board on the tentative map. So the special use permit findings are not before the board. In terms of the site plan, the applicant is proposing to have 17 buildings with three units per building. The development is proposed to have three, two points of vehicular access off Oak Street. The onsite road would be a private road. The applicant is proposing 5,117 square foot lot of open space, which you see sort of in the middle of the project. The applicant is also proposing 17,925 square feet of private open space with 20 guest parkings, 20 guest parking spaces onsite. In terms of the buildings, the applicant is proposing two-story buildings with two three-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit in each building. Each building, or each unit, I'm sorry, will have a two-car garage. Building materials are proposed to be stucco-based with the horizontal cement fiber siding as an accent. The roof will utilize a composition shingle, and white vinyl windows are proposed. The two-bedroom unit will have a second-story deck, and the other two units will have patios. Three different models and color schemes are proposed, and I'll show you these. A, B, and C. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing at its meeting of August 28, and they did recommend approval by a vote of 7 to 0, based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to conditions of approval. You will see that they don't have a centralized garbage collection area. They are proposing to have bins in their garages, and they are prepared to speak specifically to that, to the board. Present today are Rachel Kryder from Resource Concepts, Jeff Frame from Jeff Frame Architecture, and Frank Saletta. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Bonkowski, did you have questions?
A couple items I wanted to discuss, if you guys can come on up. While you're coming up, the first thing that I did want to talk about was the garbage bins with waste management. We've had, with the, with the new contract with waste management, we've had several high-density residential complexes where we've had issues with trash pickup because there's not enough physical space on the roads, especially on cul-de-sacs, to get all the bins out per waste management requirements. So have you looked at that? Have you looked at the way this is designed? And is there enough room for every unit to have two 96-gallon bins out at the curb, spaced three feet apart, so the trucks can pick them up?
And can I add to that? And enough space to have three of them potentially in the garage? Because that's the other question.
Correct.
Rachel Kryder, K-R-Y-D-E-R. And I can speak to that, the, to speak to the garage space issue. Each garage is 22 feet by 22 feet, so it's pretty generously sized. And also, because this is a condo development, it'll have an HOA, which can include some requirements to store those bins in the garage. But in terms of just having the physical space, yes. There should be physical space for those bins. Additionally, the two units in each three-plex that have the rear patio could have the option to store them in their little, small rear yard areas, too, if they prefer. The one unit won't have that option, but again, they do have the 22 by 22 garage to store those. In terms of putting the bins out between each garage, and actually, if you could go back to the elevation view, between each garage door, there's over six and a half feet. So having them spaced three feet apart would put it a little bit into, in front of the garage. But we also have some space on the side of each garage door with walkways and such where they can have those bins as well. You know, some of these units also, just because they are condos, they might not be real large families, they have the option of those smaller bins as well, if they prefer.
I think, though, that we have to assume for planning purposes that there's going to be two 96-gallon bins for every unit.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I'm just saying, you know, that is a personal preference that each individual owner may have, if they wish to, you know, not take up so much space in the garage and they don't need the big bins. But, you know, another, another item, I guess, where we would like to do the individual bins is that then each owner can actually take advantage of the curbside recycling, which they might not have the opportunity to do if they have the centralized dumpster area. I don't know how waste management is dealing with centralized recycling pickup right now, or if they are.
They absolutely are.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll provide dumpsters the same size as the waste dumpsters.
Right.
And collect them once a week.
Okay.
And they'll also provide compactors, too, if there's enough recyclables generated, as in cardboard.
Right. Okay. Well, in any case, that, the preference is to have the individual waste containers. And between the size, the large size of the garages, and the option to have them in rear yards. And we do believe that there's enough curb space for pickup day, that it shouldn't be an obstacle.
So what I just heard you say is that you think. So have you specifically looked at this to see if there's physically room?
Yes. Yeah. So the six, over six and a half feet between, like I said, the- Yeah, so the, the six, over six and a half feet between, like I said, the garage doors for two spaces, and then space on either side of the building as well. So each building will actually have, if you look at one side, the other side, and then the two in between the garage areas would have four areas for the dumps, for those bins.
Okay, and then my other question is on the condo structure. So generally, with a condominium complex, the buildings are owned by the association, and you're selling airspace, is that the case here?
Yes, that's correct. These are condos and not townhomes.
Right, so then the owners' association will provide the hazard insurance, they'll take care of landscape maintenance, all the normal things you would see with a condominium complex?
Correct.
Okay, and you've looked at those, there's no additional conditions that you would require because it's a condo complex?
We have reviewed all of the requirements for a condo complex, which included the maintenance requirements and so on, those are in the conditions of approval. With respect to the trash collection, based on inquiries by Commissioner Bonkowski, I have for the commission's consideration, if you feel it's necessary, a potential condition that would say a centralized trash collection area must be provided unless the applicant can demonstrate that storage of trash receptacles in the garage will not compromise the parking of two vehicles, and placement at the curb will not compromise travel on roadways.
That would be condition thirty-four then? Proposed condition thirty-four?
Yes, it would be a new condition, there are no conditions addressing the trash collection.
Is there any further public comment on this item? Okay, is the addition of condition potentially thirty-four on the demonstration of the garbage, is that acceptable? Yes, okay, all right, then I'll bring it back up here for a motion, Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to approve the tentative subdivision map based on the ability to make the required findings in the affirmative and subject to the conditions of approval recommended by the Planning Commission in addition to proposed new condition number thirty-four is read into the record by staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the tentative subdivision map, subject to the recommendations of the Planning Commission and an additional condition concerning the garbage that was read into the record. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
We'll move on to this big one, item seventeen D, which is the motion to consider a tentative subdivision map based, doesn't say where, on that part. Ms. Sullivan, or, no, Ms. Ferris is on this one.
Thank you. Heather Ferris for the record. The subject parcel is zoned single-family six thousand and is part of the Schultz Ranch specific plan. It was included in the original approval of the Schultz Ranch subdivision as Phase Five. The subdivision was approved in two thousand and five with a total of five hundred and twenty-one lots. Phase Five included twenty-five lots ranging in size from just over seven thousand square feet to approximately fifteen thousand square feet. Two extensions were granted, ultimately extending the approval of the map to August twenty-first, twenty-eleven. Subsequent to the granting of those extensions, the city and developer entered into a development agreement extending the expiration of the tentative map even further and outlining a phasing plan. In addition, at that time, the owners of Phase Five elected to no longer be part of the project, thereby nullifying Phase Five and reducing the total number of units to be developed in the original Schultz Ranch subdivision. At that time, it was reduced to four hundred and ninety-six lots. Subsequent to that, the First Amendment of the Development Agreement reduced the overall lots to four hundred and twenty-four. While this parcel is included in the Schultz Ranch specific plan area, the parcel is no longer part of the overall common open space development that was approved in two thousand and five and is not subject to the Development Agreement. The parcel is currently undeveloped and bordered on the north and east by Phase One and Phase Three of the Schultz Ranch common open space development. A five-point-eight-one acre single-family residential parcel is located to the south, and four single-family residential parcels ranging in size from two acres to three-point-two-five acres are located on the west of the project site. The tentative subdivision map proposes the division of seven-point-nine-four acres into twenty-nine single-family residential lots ranging in size from sixty-six hundred square feet to fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty-three square feet. Development will be consistent with the specific plan by providing varied streetscapes, large buffer lots along the southern and westernmost property lines, and increased setbacks for those buffer lots. Access to the, access is proposed from Thule Peak Circle and Wheeler Peak Drive, both existing roads within the adjacent subdivision. The Planning Commission considered this request at their August twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen meeting. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, we did receive several letters from concerned neighboring property owners, and those letters are included in your packet. Several members of the public also spoke at the meeting, and many of those concerns were related to impacts on views. As you know, views are not protected, therefore, it's not something that's evaluated in the analysis of a, of a project. However, consistent with the specific plan, homes located along the southern and western boundaries will be limited to single-story with increased setbacks. Additionally, during the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant volunteered to limit the homes along the easternmost boundary to single-story as well, and that's modified condition thirty that's outlined in my memo. Other concerns raised include impacts on traffic, water, sewer, drainage, and public spaces such as parks. As I discussed previously, this area was planned for development, and the existing infrastructure, including roads, water, and sewer, drainage, parks, and trails have been planned and/or constructed consistent with the specific plan, with the expectation that this property would develop at some point in the future. At their August twenty-eighth meeting, the Planning Commission was able to make all twelve findings in the affirmative and voted seven oh to recommend approval of the tentative subdivision map to the Board of Supervisors based on the conditions included in the staff report, with modifications to condition thirty to limit homes along the eastern boundary to single-story, and the addition of condition thirty-two, which requires the development to be included within the existing landscape maintenance district. Both of these conditions were volunteered by the applicant after hearing concerns from the public. As outlined in my memo, staff has also recommended small modifications to several other conditions to help clarify some of the language. I will note, there's a small correction to the proposed motion. It references my memo dated September fourth, it should be corrected to September sixth. Chris Baker with Manhard Consulting is here, as well as the applicant's Mark and Ryan Kruger, and I'm available for questions.
Do we have any questions? Supervisor Giome.
On the, whoever, because it deals with. No, I'm sorry. Because it deals with, there are conditions in here, just can you briefly talk to us about the protections you put in here relative to stormwater and the Phase Three issue and all of that? Some of the condition sixteen, eighteen, specifically sixteen, eighteen, relative to the easements that we dealt with on the Schultz Ranch Phase Three component, and how those may, twenty-two, yeah.
So, so this phase is proposing to utilize the same drainage as Phase Three, Phase, yes, Phase Three. And essentially, they can't move forward with anything on this until such time as those easements are perfected and/or a different route for the drainage is, is determined.
Okay, I just wanted to call that out because it, it was important at the other one, and I just, I wanted to discuss that with you. On condition twenty-eight, talking about specifically the swale that's, that's mentioned in eighteen, it says that it'll have to be maintained in perpetuity either through the formation of some sort of homeowner's association or, you know, and I, my question is, why wouldn't we just mandate that that be part of the LMD? So that the city doesn't have to deal with a whole nother association in the maintenance of, of a swale?
It will be up to the board on whether or not to amend the LMD. The applicant can't control that, so should the board choose to not amend the LMD to allow this property to join the LMD, we need, we need another option in place. Or the board could also include this in the LMD, but including the scope of the LMD that gets changed, it's an unknown that's in your hands in the future. So we just need to have options so that should the board make certain decisions that don't accommodate this being in an LMD, there's, there's a maintenance responsibility assigned.
So assuming that, well, whose responsibility is it to bring that forward?
I believe the way the conditions of approval read is that they have to petition for that prior to final map. So the final map will not be recorded without us understanding whether or not this is in the LMD and to what extent it's, what improvements, if you will, are included in the LMD. And then, just to reemphasize for purposes of other projects, when we bring the final map forward, we'll go through every single solitary condition of approval and identify to what extent.
The whole thing.
Exactly, for the tentative map and explain how every single condition of the tentative map is met.
So we're, you're comfortable as a staff with the language the way it is?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, you know, I don't want the city to have to deal with additional associations in the maintenance of a hundred-foot swale, you know? That was it for my comments.
Find the section on the LMD, which number's the LMD?
Condition number twenty-eight.
Thirty-two.
Well, twenty-eight's the homeowners' association, it doesn't.
Yeah, so condition thirty-two.
Thirty-two, okay, based on a voluntary offer. Well, I'm not, I, is that condition, I just want to make sure we're writing it well, because they volunteered, and then it says it must be part of the LMD that we approve, we must approve one. So are you getting that optionally? Must be amended to include the subject property prior to the Board of Supervisors' approval of the final map?
That's not a requirement of the final map, that's telling us that we have to amend the LMD in order to allow these properties to be part of it.
But before, okay, you, you still don't read this as we have to approve the LMD before a final map? Thank you.
So, starting with the last sentence of.
Just for the audience, it's packet, page fifteen twenty-eight, item number thirty-two.
The last sentence of condition thirty-two would read, "The maintenance district must be considered for amendment to include subject property prior to the Board of Supervisors' approval of the final map."
Thank you, I like the word considered, because that way we, the Board of Supervisors has the option to accept it or not, thank you. Further of you guys, is there any public comment on this item?
Hi, good morning. I kind of wish I would have prepared something, but, my name is Kelsey Penrose. I was born and raised here in Carson City, and I intend to die here as well, in the future, hopefully, long into the future. So, I, I don't oppose Schultz Ranch by any means. I would just like to speak a word of caution to the board and to the community members and to future developers as well, that when we look at the issues that other places such as Douglas County or Tahoe are facing right now with continuing to bring in these more expensive developments, what it's doing is it's pushing people like myself, my family, my friends, out of the city because we can no longer afford to live here. And it's forcing families to move either to Reno, to Washoe County, to Dayton, because, for example, the Schultz Ranch is, these houses are all in the four-hundred-thousand-dollar range, whereas the majority of people who live and work in Carson City are not making that much money in order to live there. And it's, you know, speaking on the condominiums that were brought up in the previous amount, those are great, you know, it's, it seems great in, in theory that you're bringing in these, you know, kind of higher-density places that it uses less land, you can fit more people on there. However, some of the other townhouses that have recently been built are being rented for eighteen hundred dollars a month, which is approximately twenty thousand dollars a year. The average renter household income for Carson City is only in about forty-one thousand dollars, so that's over fifty percent of the average Carson City renters' income. And so what's happening is everyone is having to leave, essentially, and so what's happening in Douglas County and in Tahoe, both on the Douglas side, the California side, and the Carson County side, I suppose, is that there's no workforce there anymore. And business owners are struggling to find people to work because if I'm forced to live in Dayton or Reno, why would I travel, you know, an hour to work at a job that's a service industry job that's maybe making a minimum wage? There's no sense in it, and we're already seeing those issues in Carson City with service industry jobs not being filled, and restaurants are having to shut down several days a week because there's no one to work the jobs there anymore. And so I'm not really asking for anything in particular, I would just like to, you know, go on the record as saying, please help me, because, you know, myself and my peers, that several of them work for the city, they're not able to live here anymore. And it's frightening, you know, I was able to grow up in a single-story kind of tract house over by Sealer, Sealer Elementary, I had a yard, and, you know, I was able to play in the neighborhood, go to the park, and those options are not really available to myself, to my brother, to my friends who have families. Our children or our future children aren't being presented with the same opportunities, even though we're in the same economic bracket as our parents were when we were children. And so that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia, if I, if I could just ask you to come up, because we've discussed something previously in the Schultz Ranch in general, and I'm still getting a lot of questions, so it's just to put something publicly on the record, I'm getting a, a lot of complaints from residents in the Schultz Ranch area concerning the traffic, safety on Racetrack Road and Center Drive, that they don't believe there's sufficient vision to be able to see. Can you please just speak to that for me?
Sure, Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager. So Racetrack Road is owned and maintained by Carson City. That portion of Center Drive, where it hits Racetrack Road, is owned and maintained by Douglas County. There is, if you're headed westbound on Racetrack Road coming to Center Drive, there's a fence on the property line, on the, on the right-hand side, on the north side of Racetrack Road. That fence was installed consistent with Carson City Municipal Code for setbacks and site distances. Drivers are encouraged to stop at the stop bar and then sort of, you know, inch up when it's safe and make sure it's clear before entering Center Drive. City staff did make a recommendation that Douglas County look at and consider a four-way stop there. However, it's within Douglas County code that any traffic control regulatory signs go through there, Board of County Commissioners, and to my knowledge, that hasn't happened to date. So that's the status of the four-way stop and the site distance there.
Thank you so much, I just wanted to put that on the record, because again, I've been getting a lot of questions, and I needed to stress to them, it's not within the control of this particular board, so, thank you very much. Okay, any further questions or public comment? Okay, then I'll bring it back up here for a motion.
I move to approve the tentative subdivision map based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval recommended by the Planning Commission and contained in the staff, staff's memo dated September. the staff memo dated September 6, 2019, and the amendments is read into the record today.
I have a motion and a second on the table to approve the tentative map based on the findings in the memo dated September 6 and the amendments read into the record on condition 32. Is there any other discussion? Supervisor Bunkowski.
We just got a mini lesson in Economics 101 during public comment, and it's one of the things that I think that the members of this board struggle with. But we heard one piece of the puzzle, and I think from the development side of the equation, you know, I've seen statistics that say 15, 20 years ago, a developer profit margin was 18%, 20% profit and overhead. Today, I think that it's probably shrunk to about 14% or 15% from the numbers that I've seen. So when you mention housing starting at $400,000, it's not that the developer is pocketing extra money. The truth is, they're actually pocketing less money now than they were 20 years ago when they were building. It's the cost of construction, it's the cost of labor, it's all part of the economic cycle that we're all struggling with, and as you mentioned, just finding workforce. So I don't know what the answers are. They've eluded me for the 25 years that I've been doing my private job, and we do struggle with that. But I hear you, and we deal with this all the time. We get asked, build affordable housing. In my opinion, there's no such thing. It's not possible in today's world to build affordable housing with all of the building, development standards that have to be complied with, all the regulatory issues that builders have to deal with, as well as the cost of construction and labor. So hopefully we'll find an answer someday. I don't know that we're going to find it now, but I do appreciate your comments and understand that we do hear that all the time. We do look for answers. I just don't know what those answers are yet.
All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item 17E. This is regarding a tentative subdivision map known as Little Lane Village. Ms. Sullivan, will you take us through this, please?
Yes. Okay, this is a request to subdivide 21.48 acres into 149 detached, single-family residential lots utilizing the provisions of the common open space development. You did say in your packet and my report to the Planning Commission, they also requested a special use permit on building height. The special use permit is not before the board, but just I'll take the suspense out of it and tell you what happened. The Planning Commission did approve the special use permit with two additional conditions. One, that they limited the northern tier of homes to two stories unless a 61-foot setback from the rear property line could be realized, and they required some trees to be planted along the rear property line or the northern property line. Okay, so back to the tentative map and overview of the site plan. This concept is to have homes that front on public streets and the garages will be accessed from a private alley. The average lot size is 3,183 square feet. The applicant is proposing two points of access to connect to Little Lane on the south end, two points of access on the proposed north end, specifically connections to Elaine Street and Parkland Avenue. There will also be a roadway connection to Arbor Villas to the west of the site. On the eastern portion of the property, there's a 2.45 acre site designated as common open space with 0.44 acres of common open space designated as recreation. You'll see that that corresponds to where the AO floodplain is, so that's where they've identified the open space area. By way of clarification, the recreational area is not part of the drainage facility, it's contiguous to the drainage facility. The applicant is also proposing a 0.52 acre lot that will be created to house the city's well that's currently on the site. I've included in the PowerPoint a detail of the site layout so you can see the driveways to the rear while the front porch and the front walkway to the home is fronting on the public street. In terms of the buildings, the applicant has provided four different building plan designs with each plan having three different elevations. I'll go through those briefly, and they're on page 1757 to 1760 of the packet. So the first one's a two-story, another two-story plan, a three-story plan, and another three-story plan. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this item. That's meeting of July 31, 2019. Commission spent a considerable amount of time discussing the roadways. And I spent time talking to Supervisor Bagwell about these roadways and wasn't very good at it, so I got my facts together and I'm ready to walk you through the roadways. What the Planning Commission felt was that because there were homes that fronted on Little Lane, i.e. their front door is right there and their front porch, the Planning Commission felt that there should be parking allowed on Little Lane and recommended removal, the staff's recommended condition that would prohibit parking on Little Lane. Lucia Maloney, our Transportation Manager, is present, and I'll have her speak to that in just a couple minutes. In terms of the onsite roads, the Planning Commission recommended the special street standard be utilized as opposed to the local street standard. As they found the roadway widths were just too excessive and they felt, in general, there was just too much pavement. Because when you looked at the plan, we'll just go back to the plan for a second, they said, wow, that's just a lot of pavement because you had the alleys and you had the roads. So what are we talking about? When we look at the city's collector roadway standards, I've had Stephen Potee pull together this information. If you have a collector roadway with a sidewalk, a bike lane, and parking on both sides, you should have a right-of-way width of 75 feet. If you have a collector roadway with a sidewalk, a bike lane, and parking on one side, you would have a right-of-way width of 66 feet. The applicant contemplates a right-of-way width on Little Lane of 66 feet. If you have a collector roadway with a sidewalk and a bike lane and no parking, you have a right-of-way width of 57 feet. In all cases, with each of those scenarios, that collector roadway would be three lanes, one lane in each direction and a center lane. In terms of the onsite roadway system, the applicant had initially proposed a local street section with a sidewalk and parking on both sides, which had a width of 58 feet for right-of-way. The Planning Commission is recommending the utilization of the special street section with a sidewalk and parking on both sides, which would result in a right-of-way width of 47 feet, given that we had, and this was only for the east-west roads. So this would mean two of our roads would shrink by 11 feet each, so we gained 22 feet. What the Planning Commission said, as I said at the beginning, when they considered the three-story and the special use permit on building height, they said, okay, instead of that 50-foot setback you were recommending, you need to realize a setback of 61 feet. Otherwise, you're limited to two stories. So that counts for 11 feet. We still have another 11 feet. Chris Baker can tell you his plans for that 11 feet. He's been working with our fire marshal to ensure fire safety, but there is a little bit left over. I think it's about five feet left over. So if we needed extra right-of-way on Little Lane, recognizing they are suggesting 66 feet, and the standard with parking on one side is 66 feet, but the question would be, are we having a sidewalk or are we having a pathway system consistent with the unified pathways? In front of Arbor Villas, it's a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot buffer. The pathway system, I believe, is, I want to say it's a seven-foot sidewalk with a two-and-a-half-foot buffer. Either way, there is space. There's that extra space if we utilize the special street section. Condition 53, which is on page 1727, does call out that the five-foot sidewalk should be separated by two-and-a-half feet from the back of curb. If you look at the detail on page 1794, you'll see that they're not showing that two-and-a-half foot separation between the sidewalk, but they're showing a seven-foot sidewalk. So that will be something that will need to be corrected at the time of construction plan, and the conditions of approval do speak to that. I'll also mention, condition of approval 47 does require that the right-of-way dedication be made to ensure that all improvements are located within the right-of-way. The Commission did vote 5 to 2 to recommend approval based on their ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval. Commissioner Wiggins voted no. He was not comfortable that the Planning Commission was modifying the street design and parking standards. He did not think that was the role of the Planning Commission, wasn't comfortable with that, and based on that, he could not make the finding regarding the adequacy of the roads. Commissioner Tingle voted no based on concern on the impact to the school system. I will have Lucia come up and speak specifically to parking on Little Lane, but I do want to, for the benefit of the record, should the board approve this based on the recommendations of the Planning Commission or other recommendations? We do have typos in condition 28 and condition 33. Thank you, Supervisor Bunkowski. So condition 28 should be modified to change show to shown, and condition 33 should be modified to change the word from. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lucia, and then I'm available to answer questions. And Fred Bates and Chris Baker are present on behalf of the project.
Thank you. Ms. Malone?
Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager. I'll add a couple comments, and then if you have additional questions, I'm happy to answer them. We looked through our minor collector roadway, so Little Lane is considered a minor collector roadway. We look at the functional classification of that road and how it functions. Really, its function is to serve traffic needs to get from Solomon Road over to Stewart and connect those different neighborhoods. So when we're looking at minor collector roadways, some examples that come to mind are Coontz Lane, or Silver Sage, or Bud Eye, or Airport Road just north of Fifth. All of those streets operate in a similar fashion, right? They're collecting traffic from the neighborhoods and getting them to the bigger regional roads. Some examples where there are parking on minor collector roadways include Mountain Street, Winnie, west of North Carson. Those allow parking, and those are within the width of Little Lane. However, some streets where we have parking where it's challenges, challenging would include Airport Road north of Desa Toya, between Desa Toya and 50, where we have parking on both sides. We have a bike route that goes there, Route 6, and we do get calls about site distance, and sometimes it can be tricky to navigate. When we look at some of our newer or more recently engineered minor collector roads like Silver Sage or Coontz that had recent improvements, we chose not to allow parking on those minor collector roadways. Sometimes it can promote safety issues when speeds get higher. You don't want those doors opening when there's bicyclists coming through on the bike routes, so it can be challenging. In this instance, the applicant did propose a 66-foot wide right-of-way, which does meet the city code. However, staff felt that from a functionality of the roadway, it wasn't necessarily desirable to have parking.
Oh, maybe I'll jump in and ask the question because when I, we were actually looking at the standard, it would say that we could only have parking on one side, and this condition was going to allow, with the removal that the Planning Commission did, would have allowed parking on both sides. And that's really why I wanted to understand the thing. So I think even if we consider parking, it should only be on one side so that we do comply with our actual standard. And then the discussion is, should we allow it, parking at all? But I definitely want us to consider parking only on one side so that we stay in compliance. And maybe the applicant can speak to, they're okay with that, I don't think they'd mind, but I like to get it on the record with Mr. Manhard speaking for them if we were going to change that condition. So, oh, Baker, I'm sorry. From Manhard, yeah. I did say it, but the new Mr. Manhard. Yeah, sorry, Chris.
Supervisor Bagwell, based on conversations and inquiries you made prior to the meeting, the staff does have a draft condition for consideration, and Chris Baker may want to speak to this language. That draft condition, if this is where the board would like to take it, would be a modification to condition 38. That would say parking will be allowed on the north side of Little Lane only. No parking signs shall be installed on the south side of Little Lane along the property front edge.
Is that going to be acceptable to?
Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant. Again, we went through this with the adjacent property that was, is currently being developed. We just designed in accordance with the 66-foot right-of-way. In the process, it was determined on the adjacent property that parking was not going to be allowed. The room was there. We designed, moving forward with the current property in front of you, just to the same standard to match the curbs, match the sidewalks, match the, you know, the setback in between. We're fine with this condition. If the board wishes to have parking on the north side, you know, that actually, I think, would benefit the community. It just gives, you know, extra parking. They do front the street, so visitors, deliveries, things of that nature, it would make sense to have parking in front of the front doors. We do have parking in front of the front doors throughout the whole community, so we would agree with this condition if that's the direction the board wants to go.
So, maybe I can just ask, so in Arbor Villa, which is the one next door, right? Their properties do not front the street. They're all fronting internal. Is that correct, or do they front the street?
It's a very similar product. They're an alley-loaded product that also fronts the street.
But also fronts. And we have no parking allowed in Arbor?
Correct. On the northern portion of Little Lane that Arbor fronts, there is actually no parking.
And so if we allowed no parking on this project also to be consistent with what we did with Arbor Villa, they still have sufficient movement that they're going to make on all the internal streets to be able to accommodate the plans with the special use permit because nothing was required to be changed at Little Lane side of the deal, correct? Am I correct?
The applicant, without parking on Little Lane, is meeting the parking standards. Is that the question?
No. My question was, will they be able to comply with, oh, mine was, they'd still be able to comply with the special use permit conditions to be able to build the product?
To have three stories on the northernmost tier of buildings, they need to achieve a setback of 61 feet. Their plan that you're looking at is at 50 feet, so the board would have to agree with the Planning Commission that they could utilize the special street section on the east-west roadways that are internal on the site. It doesn't, Little Lane's not in play.
It won't impact Little Lane, so we could go back to condition 38 and meet all conditions then. We could put it back in. Okay, thank you. Brad?
Couple of questions. First, I wanted to know if you were meeting the parking requirements without parking on Little Lane. There are no restrictions if we allow parking on the north side of Little Lane. There'd be no restrictions on that, so people that lived in Arbor Village would also be able to use those parking spots because it's street parking, correct? Because it's not equitable. If we didn't allow Arbor Village parking on the street, and we do allow it here, that's not equitable, but if there's no restrictions on it and both complexes can use it, then there may be a benefit to that. So I'll make sure that that's on the record. Then I want to go to trash. So if your question is on the parking, you want to do that first, and I'll come back to trash?
It's on roadway. You have more roadway stuff?
No, I don't.
Okay. So, on the, you say you've been working with the fire marshal, so, you know, my concern with the history I have is 47 feet. Can you go back to that, Hope or Heather, to that? So 47 feet with parking on both sides, that's the one that we're looking at doing? And you're saying you've spoken to the fire department and they're good with that?
Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting. So we had this discussion throughout the process. We were working with staff on potentially using a 50-foot street section through, on the east-west roads. If we do end up ultimately having three-story structures, as Commissioner knows, you need 26-foot clear for a ladder truck, not 20-foot clear. So actually, what I was going to touch on is, we're actually increasing our alleys each two feet to be 26 feet instead of 24-foot, which we submitted a plan to fire based on Planning Commission's recommendation of the special street section, which accommodates for a ladder truck.
So the private streets would be 26 feet wide?
26 feet. 26 feet wide, yeah.
Without parking?
Without parking. No, there's, there are no parking on those streets. They are 26, they just access driveways.
And who's enforcing the no parking?
There will be an HOA enforcing, maintaining the basin, maintaining the recreational areas, maintaining, enforcing parking. Yes.
Okay. And that 26-foot width is in a condition, or is not in a condition? So, I'm assuming that, so would you be amenable to putting that in as a condition?
Yes, if any, I could state something of the nature of any alleys accessing three-story units need to be 26-foot in height. You know, there still is the potential that there maybe is only two stories, depending on market conditions, you know, so we'd want to reserve the right to only do 24s if obviously there's no three-story homes. But yes, I think it does make sense. I think the conversations that I had with Fire was that, you know, the general overarching conditions that we need to meet Fire Code kind of covered that, but if the board wishes to place another condition, that's fine.
I don't know. I mean, you're not planning on sprinklering these homes, are you?
No.
Okay. Okay, let me mull that over a little bit.
Okay, if we go, in an earlier item, we talked about trash and whether there was room for the bins. This is a pretty dense complex. Is trash pickup anticipated to be in the alley section ways, or on the frontage streets, the east-west streets?
We would anticipate trash pickup in the alleys.
And have we looked at whether there's room for the truck to get through there? Well, I guess if the fire truck can get through, the trash truck can get through, and there's adequate space to put two 96-gallon bins out in front of each unit, spaced three feet apart?
Yeah, with the driveway cuts, the lots are actually anywhere from 32 to 35-foot wide individually, so there's.
How wide are the drives?
The drives are eight, yes, 16 with the returns, they're 18, so.
Right, so you got approximately 12 to 14 feet.
12 per, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're good there. And then I have a question for staff. In the past, we've looked at, when we're requiring HOAs to maintain landscaping or other maintenance tasks in perpetuity, we have put in language allowing for the circumstance where the HOA goes bankrupt, the city has the ability to step in through a deed restriction or some other mechanism to ensure that another entity takes over that maintenance task, so that the city doesn't get stuck with it, but that hasn't been in the conditions recently. So just a note that we need to make sure we have that ability, because 30 years ago, we went through this where HOAs were being relied on to take care of these tasks, and then there was a period where a lot of HOAs went bankrupt, the city had to step in and clean up the issues. So I just want to make sure that going forward, we're addressing that.
Mr. Gianni, do you have more questions?
On 26, and we talked a little bit about this, it's the disclosure advising of high groundwater must be recorded at the time of final map recording, and that was for all parcels, right? Even the ones outside of the flood area? I mean, obviously, they have to take care of the flood area, but it's for all parcels?
Correct.
Okay. On the other one, and you answered this question, but I just wanted you to address it, the detention pond, the way I looked at it here, and this is a question I had for you, is that I saw it as sort of like that detention or retention pond or basin that's at Coontz and, I don't know if it's Ponderosa, or where it's all grass and people play in it, and what happens is that sediment builds up in there, and pretty soon, instead of having grass, you have, you know, half grass and half dirt and weeds and garbage. But that's not the intent here, it's two separate functions, correct?
Correct. They just happen to be adjacent to each other. The recreational area will be a turfed area, and the pond will actually be a primary detention basin. It'll be revegetated with a grass seed mix, very similar to other, you know, detention forward or main purposes is a detention facility. There's not going to be kind of co-mingling between recreational uses and detention, sometimes the, meaning sometimes the recreational facility could be wet, this isn't the case.
Right, okay. And we feel that the conditions sufficiently address maintaining that in perpetuity?
Actually, I was going to wait till public comment, but I think Commissioner or Supervisor Bunkowski's comments on Condition 57, we can certainly add language about an LMD should the HOA cease to operate, and I'm prepared to provide that language, and I also do suggest that we include the language you are contemplating regarding the alleys, because that way, when this comes in for construction, we have it in writing that that was a condition, we don't have to try to remember why we, why the alley grew.
And I'm comfortable with that.
And it's 57 and 58?
Yeah. Yes, 58 also. And the last one I had is, I noticed on the map, and I didn't see this anywhere, that they're talking about potentially doing construction access on the north side, and I'd like to, I'd like to limit that. It doesn't seem like it's necessary to have heavy construction traffic coming through those residential streets when we've got a collector street that affords them access. Is that an issue? No. So I'd like to see a 61st condition that limits construction access to Little Lane.
Is that, are you completed?
I'm done, yeah, sorry.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, then we'll bring it back up here to decide on, I think we need to decide on the parking issue on Little Lane. Do we want to make it north side only, or no parking? Because staff is recommending no parking, and so what is our pleasure, so that when I have Hope read all the other stuff in before the motion, we can?
My input would be that, I mean, because they front on the street, I think I would like to allow parking. I think it's, I think I'd like to allow parking, but I'd also like to allow it in Arbor Village. I don't think we should approve parking here without going back and giving parking to Arbor Village. Doesn't make sense to me to restrict it to one and not the other. And I don't know if we can do that, but it seems like there's a way to do it.
But they would be, the residents of Arbor Village would be allowed to use parking in front of this project?
Yes, but in some cases, it's, you know, 300 or 400 feet, right?
And?
Well, you know, I get that you and I can walk 300 or 400 feet.
It's more parking than they have now.
Okay. It just doesn't seem fair to me. Why would we grant it to one and not the other?
Have Lucia come back? Thank you. She anticipated this. Can you have a little more discussion as to why you believe that parking is not appropriate? Because staff is making this decision for a reason, so why did we not allow it on Arbor Villa that hereby you don't want to allow it here?
Like I said, we just looked at the functional, the way that the road operates, as well as, you know, in some parts of town, it makes sense to have more parking. Like, if you think about Winnie Lane, just west of North Carson, there's a strip of businesses in there, and so in that specific location, it makes sense to have more on-street parking, because there's more trip generation, right? There's more reasons people would go there. In this case, there wasn't a lot of businesses or additional trip generators, though the comment regarding visitors and loading and unloading is a fair comment. I would say that we could allow it here, if that was the desire of the board, and monitor it, if it seemed really well-used and high occupancy of the spaces, we could always consider during a next, a future project of Little Lane, where we restripped it, that we could potentially add it at a future date. The width of that section in front of that, the earlier development, is 66 feet as well. That said, I would draw your attention to Condition 53, it's 53, right, Hope? That mentions a 2-1/2-foot buffer. This was an additional buffer in the pedestrian area. If we did choose to allow parking on the north side of the street, I would request or make the recommendation that we get it somewhere in the motion or the conditions, that at 66 feet plus that 2-1/2-foot buffer, to be consistent with the pathways plan.
I think that's what my overall concern is, is we're trying to do complete streets and everything that we're venture these days, and safety is of utmost importance, and so when we're looking at bike lanes and buffers, and that's really what my concern is, is I didn't want to say, yay, we're going for bike lanes, and then all you have is parking there, and we're hitting the bicyclists, and we're having all the conflict of people trying to park across bicycle lanes, but I'm willing to listen to thoughts here.
I have lots of thoughts on this. First, Little Lane is literally little, so I don't think that it has the same impact as allowing parking on, say, Silver Sage, which you mentioned. I think that we could be creating a problem, these are two fairly dense projects being constructed, and since there's not on-street parking allowed, if we don't provide for additional parking somewhere for guests, I think we're creating a conflict between the HOAs trying to enforce guest parking on the streets. I can just see that that's going to happen. So my preference would be that we do allow it. There's no change to the approvals or the conditions to Arbor Village for us to go back and stripe it at some point. Like, if we're going to stripe it for this project, we can stripe all of Little Lane on the north side. We don't have to change any of the conditions, we don't have to go back to change anything in order to do that, so that addresses what your concern was, Stacy. So I think that there's a lot of benefit and minimal downside to doing this, so my preference would be that we move forward with the parking on the north side.
And I agree with those comments, and then the other comment I have, because of the density here, and I just know about access for emergency vehicles, whether it be police cars, or fire trucks, or ambulances, you know, it's, you can say there's no parking on the street, but people are going to be stopping on the streets, and if you give them a place to stop legitimately on Little Lane and park, then hopefully it reduces some of those conflicts. So I agree with Brett.
For the record, would you like to go over changes to the conditions?
Okay, so I believe on Condition 38, the board would be considering parking will be allowed on the north side of Little Lane only. No parking signs must be installed on the south side of Little Lane along the project frontage. Conditions 57, 58, we could add the wording that says, prior to final map, the applicant, a final map approval, the applicant shall petition for a landscape maintenance district, so that the city may implement it should the homeowners' association cease to function. 61 is on the private alleys, language that states, private alleys must have a width of 26 feet with no parking on the alley to be enforced by the homeowners' association.
And the comment you want to look relative to alleys specifically addressing three-story homes?
Okay, so let's try 61 again. Should the project include three-story homes, private alleys must have a width of 26 feet with no parking on the alley. No parking is to be enforced by the homeowners' association.
How about private alleys serving three-story homes?
I think that's going to be hard, because we're going to do the site improvement permit, which will be the alley construction in advance of the building permits. So I think we need to, unless they come forward and nullify their special-use permit, which authorized the three-story home, we can't anticipate what building will be there. And 63, construction traffic shall utilize Little Lane to be enforced by the general contractors. Signs shall be posted on Little Lane advising that this is the construction entrance, and the name and phone number of the general contractor shall be provided.
You said that was Condition 63, it should be Condition 61?
I'm sorry, 62.
62?
Yes.
And could you repeat 61? The alleyway?
Should the applicant utilize three-story homes?
Got it.
The private alleys must have a width of 26.
Repeat 62?
Yeah. My concern on 62 is that we're not specifically saying that they can't use, is it a lane and, is it Parkland on the west and the lane on the east?
Is the objective that construction traffic will utilize Little Lane?
Only.
Correct. Okay, we can add the word only. Construction traffic shall utilize Little Lane only, to be enforced by the general contractors, and signs shall be posted on Little Lane advising of this and providing for the name and the phone number of the general contractor.
Okay, and then, Hope, just in case, on the staff report on 62, were we needing to put, the project shall utilize the city's special-street section? Somehow I wrote myself that note, that there was a little typo that we were going to fix there, too. On the staff report, number 62, the project shall utilize the city's special-street cities.
Yes, it should be the possessive, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I was going to say, I think I remember that.
Actually, I'm sorry, I was working, my numbering's off. I apologize. I was working off the Planning Commission report.
Thank you.
So.
We could just, we could say you'll appropriately renumber.
Right, 62 will add the word, the city's special-street section. 63 continues to refer to the parking stalls. 64 will be the condition regarding the private alleys, and 65 will be the condition concerning construction traffic. 57, 58 will add the wording regarding petitioning for the LMD, and we will change Condition 38 to allow the parking on the north side of Little Lane with no parking signs installed on the south side of Little Lane along the property frontage.
So, we're changing 38, we're changing 57 and 58, and then we're adding new conditions, 63, 4, and 5?
Correcting 62.
Correct? Okay, correcting 62 and 63, and adding 64 and 65.
There you go.
Is that correct?
I don't believe there's a change to 63.
You're right, I don't have anything on 3, 63.
I thought you just read something regarding 63.
Sorry, 62 will read, the project shall utilize the city's special-street section, so we'll add the word cities. 63 will remain as is, and we add 64 regarding private alleys, and 65 regarding construction traffic.
All right, let me show you this. I moved to approve tentative, the tentative subdivision map, based on the ability to make the required findings and the affirmative, and subject to the conditions of approval recommended by the Planning Commission, with the following changes. New language for conditions 38, 57, 58, and 62, and adding new conditions 64 and 65.
As discussed on the record.
As discussed on the record.
Okay. Sir, any? I have a motion for approval of the tentative map pursuant to discussions today. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. Sorry, that was. We're going to move on to Item 18A, which is a discussion only, it's a presentation by the city manager, excuse me, on updates for the city projects and activities. Ms. Paulson?
All right, before I started, I did want to recognize the new face over at our table. Stephanie Hicks has just joined us as the deputy city manager, starting this last Monday, so we welcome her and very excited to have her. So on to really exciting things, building permit.
Now that she's appointed, you're going to go on vacation again?
Yeah, I have three more vacations. No, I'm good for a while. All right, so, building permit activity. Construction continues at a steady pace, and the permit valuation for August was 7.8 million, for a total year-to-date of 110.4 million. 76 million of that is residential, 18 million is new commercial and industrial, and 16 million is commercial and industrial remodel and miscellaneous. Also, for the month of August, we issued 16 single-family detached permits, for a total of 217 residential permits issued for the calendar year.
Nancy, on that, have we gotten any word that you're aware of from any of the proposed projects that have tentative map approval, that they're going to pull large numbers of permits prior to the end of the year, like happened last year?
I haven't. I haven't heard.
And everybody left already.
Yeah. All my people left. But I'll find out. I haven't heard any, any rumblings of that, but let me find out. So this item is scheduled for the planning commission on September 25th. This is the site of the previously approved RV park. The new plan is to create individual lots for sale, but the operational parameters would be the same as with the prior RV park approval. For example, the stays would still be limited to 180 days, and this would, is expected to come to the board on October 17th.
October, I know, I know you don't always control this, but October 17th, I'm hoping to leave by noonish.
Yes, I have a, I have a note of that.
Thank you. I'm here in the morning.
Yeah. This is the IFC activity from August 14 through September 4th under salary and benefits. As usual, these are mostly just the approval to fill vacant positions. In addition, you'll see under the Health Department, we have a new policy that requires IFC approval to hire staff through the temporary staffing agencies. So the IFC approved hiring office specialists and nurses for the flu season, and that's an annual occurrence, and it's already, it's budgeted, it's paid for with, with the revenues, the vaccine revenues and various grants. Then under general fund contingency, we approved $13,507 for a part-time park ranger aid. This is providing coverage for the expanded rifle range hours. And in addition, we're, we're just down to one park ranger due to another one being out on leave. So this is just temporary coverage. In addition, we approved funding, the replacement of three boilers at the Health Department. That came to $28,989. Originally during, this came before us during the CIP process for the fiscal '20 budget, and due to budget constraints, at that time, we just approved 121,000. At that time, the estimate for three boilers was 240,000, so we approved a partial amount. They went out and, and quotes were received, and actually for three boilers, that came in at just under 150,000. So in light of the things that had happened at UNR in their dorm, you know, with the, the issues that happened there, with the explosion, we just considered that it was a safety concern, and we'd like to replace all three of them at this point. So it was just an additional 29,000 for that. And then the, we approved an augmentation for 28,000. We're going to augment both the revenue and the expense line items for, this is state-mandated enhancements to power profile, which is our voter registration system, and this will be reimbursed 100% from the state. The last one is we approved funding for improvements to the city's emergency operations center in the amount of $23,459. This would be for five laptops, three multiband radios, and electrical and phone costs. This, this was requested because it would greatly reduce the amount of time that it takes to set up for an emergency. I think when they're, they're planned emergencies, it works out all right, but right now. Well, well, planned, not a planned emergency, a planned EOC setup, yeah, for like Nevada Day and that kind of thing. So I guess what's happening right now is our IT employers are having to climb up into the ceiling to try to get the wiring, you know, into the room to get set up for all the, you know, the laptops and, and various other things. So this would just enable them to set up, you know, instantly for an actual emergency. And with those things coming out of the undesignated in the capital projects fund, we still have approximately $499,615 available for the rest of the year. And that's all I have.
Nancy, do, we have a status on the hiring for the park ranger for the rifle range? We have interviews scheduled. Where are we at on that?
Oh, there's Jen.
Thank you, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. They're doing interviews as we speak, so interviews are all day today.
Just must have known that. Okay.
And then we anticipate second interviews with the top one or two candidates. We really want to get this right, so. And then just depending on their availability, if they have to leave another position, you know, the timing, but we'll get them on as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move on to item number 19, and I want to start with, I think I heard that Mr. Yu potentially has an answer for us on the earlier question on the Public Guardian. Mr. Yu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. Earlier this morning, this board appointed Heather Cabral to a four-year term serving as the city's public guardian. There was some discussion on the record and some questions related to the length or the duration of that term for appointment purposes. I think initially off the cuff, you know, my gut reaction was that, because there was a little bit of ambiguity in statute, that it would be okay to extend her term to run until the end of September. I want to walk that back, and I'm going to retract that. There's nothing that we need to do. My recollection of the motion that carried successfully earlier this morning was correct. I did revisit the statutes, had an opportunity to do so, and appoint the board to NRS 253-150, which specifies that the board of supervisors shall appoint the public guardian for a term of four years from the date of appointment. That's a little bit different from the vacancy provision in 253-170 that addresses vacancies to be filled by an acting public guardian, which is a little open-ended, and there's no specificity as to the duration. But with respect to the appointment of the official public guardian, which is what we did this morning with respect to Heather Cabral, that's four years from the date of appointment. And I also did have a sidebar, just very briefly, with the city manager Nancy Paulson as well. And my understanding is that there's really no controversial impact or detriment to fiscal matters for budgetary purposes. So I think we're good, but I just wanted to revisit this on the record before we move on to the next meeting.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they'd like to see come up? No? We're, wow, we're going really good. Any more status review of projects? We just had the answer on the rifle range. Okay. Any internal communications or administrative matters? None? No, of course. Gosh, no correspondence? We're good. Okay, now we're up to, anybody here want to, Stacy, do you have anything to share?
No.
We're really moving along. Brett? I'm sharing. Okay. So I'm really excited to announce that the American Spirit Magazine, which is done by the daughters of the American Revolution, I am pleased to let you all know that Carson City, woo-hoo, is a feature in the magazine, the heart of the Silver State, and we had four wonderful pages. I have written to the DAR and received permission for us to actually reprint the article so that we can post it on our website and stuff. And I just want to mention, one of the greatest things about it is they happen to go over, I'm not sure if they're listening, but maybe we'll get one to them. The Stewart Indian Cultural Center was one of the feature components of this, and that is our city Christmas ornament this year. So I bought them an ornament and sent it to the, to Ms. Jamie that wrote this. So I just want to say that I'll get you the high-resolution file and stuff. They're sending it to me so that we can do a legal link, and then I'll get you the disclosure information. But it's pretty exciting. The magazine goes to over 100,000 people across the United States, and it was great to see Carson City featured, so. Good. Okay. And then do we have any staff comments or status reports? No? Then we'll move on to our final public comment for the day. Is there anyone that wishes to address us? Public comment? Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning.
Oh, sorry. And it'll turn green. There you go.
Good morning, my name is John Sullivan. I'm an advocate and work close with DD Foremaster and Do Drop-In. And there's Agenda 13, which was concerning the sale. I was not here or present during what was decided on that agenda. Was it to be sold?
Yes.
And has the city or the council decided on how those funds would be spent or where it would be allocated? Because from my understanding, those, that was donated to the city for low-income housing.
The Brown Street property?
Yes, that's correct. And from that point, I know some part of it was maybe, was given away to Classy Seconds or donated to that? No? So that's, it's still all intact from the original donation?
Yeah. That, Classy Seconds, all of the property that they have purchased, they've purchased outright from people other than the city of Carson, from private, from private property owners.
Okay, so the initial donated land is still intact? And what, what's the size of that land?
I don't, three acres.
Two, two-point-some acres. I, I think that there's some confusion as to the city-owned properties in the Brown Street special plan area, which included the property that Classy Seconds now purchased, but was owned by other parties.
Okay.
So it was just a planning area versus just the parcels owned by the city.
Okay. And so the, the land that was donated is being planned to be sold? That's correct. And so has the city decided or had any thought into where that money would be allocated?
No. No, no decision was made today on any of the proceeds from the sale of properties.
Does the council have any intention of putting it into low-income housing? That where, you know, is originally the intention of the donated land was to be allocated to our homelessness instead of, you know, the silver city, it'd be, or like the homeless silver city of Carson City, you know, there's so many people that in need of housing and stuff, working at Do Drop-In. There's, you know, a lack of housing. The housing that has been being built is high-income or more luxury apartments, you know, stuff by the fandango, which excludes, you know, a great part of our population. And, you know, and the result, people are living on the streets or out of their cars or with family. So I just wanted to, I would, I would like it to be noted that, you know, I hope the council in their hearts have good intentions to allocate that money to, you know, the people of the city that truly need it, and.
Thank you so much. We, we understand your concerns and, and wishes. Thank you.
And when, when would be the, would it be the next agenda?
It, it'll come back to us if a sale occurs, and then at that time, there may be a motion or a discussion on the proceeds. So if you want to leave your information with staff so that you can be notified when that agenda item, we, we could try and assist you in that way, so it's not missed.
Okay, I greatly appreciate that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Is there any further public comment?
In, in, in terms of future agenda items, that, you know, since we, you have the note to bring the allocation of the $905,000, and, and can we add this to that as well? So a discussion and potential decision on how to allocate the 300,000.
Yeah. We can do that as well.
Thanks.
Okay. If there's no further public comment, if there's no objection, I'll adjourn. Objection? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all for a good meeting.